2020 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. We are streaming this morning's meeting live on KPTS Channel 8, on the county's Facebook and YouTube channels as well. We are still social distancing in this room. We have the plexiglass barriers between commissioners and we have limited staff in the room. Before we begin the meeting this morning, commissioners, I'd like to remind everyone that the phone calls for the random sample survey will begin later this week. So residents who receive phone calls from the 660 prefix, that's generally a county line, we ask people to answer those phone calls. And if they don't answer them, there will be a voicemail asking people to call them back to participate in the survey. Also, tomorrow, the Health Department's mobile testing sites will begin. We'll start at Clearwater Senior and Community Center on East Janet Avenue. This will be from 9:00 a.m. to noon in Clearwater. Residents can call for an appointment by dialing 211, and walk-ups are also welcome. So this is a new service that the Health Department is doing to reach out into our community, into areas that are outside of Wichita. Additionally, if anyone would like to be tested for COVID-19 regardless of symptoms and at no cost, they can dial 211 to schedule an appointment to be tested by the Health Department. And then, as we gradually begin to reopen the county, to reopen commission meetings to the public, I'd like to remind everyone that if you would like to make a public comment here at the commission meeting, you can either submit comments online at sedgwickcounty.org, or you can email communications@sedgwick.gov, and those comments will be provided to commissioners before the meeting. Or you can sign up to speak and come in person if you dial the manager's office at 660-9393. We're allowing people to sign up up until 5:00 p.m. Tuesday before the meeting to come and address commissioners in person. On the agenda this morning, we have meeting minutes. There are resignations and appointments to various advisory boards. There's a public hearing for the Boeing Industrial District and one for the county's application for community development block grant funds. Then you'll have a discussion on the CARES Act and a partnership agreement related to the Northwest Bypass. And commissioners, we do have a fire agenda this morning. So with those announcements, Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you, Kate, and good morning to everybody. Good morning, fellow commissioners. Thank you for the, and welcome to the Wednesday, June 10th, Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners Meetings. With that, we will start. Madam Clerk, first item.
In vacation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meisner.
Present.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you received, there's been four comments public that we received in writing, and we have a couple of people scheduled to speak, and I just heard there's another one that wants to speak. So first of all, let's cover the ones in writing. Does anybody have any comments or want to point anything out? Being none? Okay, well, we'll go to the, to the people that are here. Public comment, period. So I think Tanya is out to bring somebody in. Good morning. Please state your name and your address, and you will have, you will have three minutes to, to present your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Barbara McGuire. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak with you personally today. The matter is quite dear to my well-being and my community well-being. So as a quick background, I'm a fourth-generation resident of rural Sedgwick County. I did have a hiatus in Miami County for 20 years. During that time, I only called once about roads, and I lived on a dirt road, and they fixed it the next day. So it's polar opposite in Rockford Township, unfortunately. During those four generations in rural Sedgwick County, I've traveled hundreds and hundreds of miles on paved, excuse me, rock roads, gravel roads. So I'm very familiar with rural America and what the standards are for maintenance. I have had relatives doing maintenance and heard from them how it's done properly. Some of the pictures I'm going to show you today, I don't know, can you see anything yet picture-wise, guys? Okay, this is my view. Thank you. This is the maintainer in front of my house. The next one, hopefully, will sh, oops. On the keyboard. Whoops, let me go. Okay, this is, as he approached the camera, due to my amputation, I can't take the shots I always want, so you're just going to have to work with me here. This one was from a little bit of a distance. It's a little dark, but you can see he has a blade that's as wide, or if not wider, than the surface of the road, and that's the wrong blade, I can tell you. And as you can see here, it's chock-full of dirt. He's not maintaining, he is excavating with this process. We have members of our community who are more of an expert than I am on that detail, so I'll let them run with it. My first call to our trustee was in 2017 when I bought the property and was in the process of cleaning it up myself because it was an auction property and quite a mess. And I asked him to clean the culverts because I understood that was a proper request of a official, that is, the right-of-way and not my obligation to clean culverts. And he immediately said I'd have to buy new ones, and then he'd clean them. And I asked a neighbor and talked to them about it, and they all assured me no. Maintenance is their job, and that was a maintenance request. So I didn't ever buy new culverts because I feel like I was asked to spend a few thousand dollars inappropriately. When I later expressed this position to the trustee, he grew enraged, okay? I was yelled at for 10 minutes of a 13-minute call, and I finally said, "I'm sorry, I won't take the abuse any longer. I feel I've been reasonable, I feel I've been firm and clear," which was enough to upset him. I have a social work degree, and I'm trained in anger management and de-escalating a crisis situation, and I was unable to obtain that with all that training in place. So he's very stressed, would be the kindest thing to say. As a consequence, I no longer call the trustee. This year, I've used only email. I brought a copy of those emails for you to look at. I never receive replies to those emails. At one point, the trustee refused to return phone calls. He said a lawyer with the county advised him he wasn't required to. Is that three minutes already? Wow. I hope you don't mind, it's very important.
Well, I mean, can you just wrap it up and get to your conclusion?
Wow. Again, four generations of paying taxes to this county just got slapped in the face. I appreciate your constraints, councilors, but this is very important. I drive an F-350. I know how to drive rural roads. Usually, I'm at work the first on the docket, every, no matter what the weather. I've been stuck on our roads three times. Had to have neighbors pull me out. Okay, online services.
Okay.
Send traffic down 143rd.
Please, please get to, please get through someone, please.
We're done. That's it. You guys don't care?
Well, we do care. You had three minutes, and that's what.
I was told there might be some concessions because it's so important to us. This is a picture out of a manual.
Any comments?
That I think KU published. It shows a shoulder washing event, and this, the caption says, "This ditch needs to be cleaned up." You look at my ditches, they're worse. And they always are. The manual itself isn't even being attended to. I guess that's all you care about.
Commissioner Howell. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McGuire, for being here. I'd like to just make a comment, maybe ask you a question, but I want the board to know that Ms. McGuire has worked with me on trying to create the policy. We talked about staff meeting last week regarding KSA 68-124. I think that's the right reference number. But there are some issues in some parts of our county where townships have unfortunately not been able to keep the roads passable. I think most townships, as Commissioner O'Donnell has stated at the staff meeting, they do a tremendous job. Overall, I think townships do great work. But there are some times where there is an issue that seems to be unsolvable, and that's what this statute's about, is trying to use county commissioners to resolve the problem between those constituents and those township officials. And that's what this is about. And so, as Barb and I have spoken in the past, what we're trying to do is address the issue of passability as a first and foremost priority. And there are places that are not passable, and we talk about that, and Barb, I'd like to ask you just to reflect on this one thing, if you please, would do that. In regards to mail and school buses and being able to get to work back, you know, what is your experiences on the roads in terms of, have you found places that it's too scary to travel down the road, or that you said you were stuck three times? I don't know how, how, how many other people get stuck. What's your experience in terms of passability on these roads?
There is none. You have to pull off the road into someone's driveway or get stuck in the ditch to let another car approach and pass you. I wouldn't want to meet an emergency service vehicle in that situation. I don't get my mail daily because I can't walk through the mud to get to my mailbox, it's that bad. My mailman spins out and digs a deeper trench quite often, and I'm amazed they make it out when they do.
All right. I hope you'll, I guess, see what happens, you know, I know there's other speaker at least, and if there's any other questions, I hope that you'll stand by, but thank you for coming today. Appreciate your time.
Vicky asked me to wait because she's scared to be here, so I'll wait with her.
Ma'am, wait just a second. Commissioner O'Donnell has a question.
Sir.
I have a question. I don't know if it'd be for you, Ms. McGuire, or for Commissioner Howell, but the trustee position is up this year for election, right?
I'll speak to that if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to know who's, who's running against the current trustee because that's how you fix these problems.
Well, that is, okay, so there is a election this, this fall. There is a general election only, and the incumbent has not filed for reelection. So we have two names that will meet up in November, and we'll see someone seated in January.
Right.
And I am familiar with that race very much.
I just hope nobody dies between now and January. It is that serious. I want you guys to come to dinner. I'll have a barbecue. Come on out, and we'll just drive my road. One road's enough to convince you, and there are several.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Ma'am?
Ma'am? I'm sorry. Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Oh, thank you. I should apologize.
I want to let you know that I'm, I'm not adverse to some kind of a resolution being passed by the, by the county commission to address this issue. It is in state statute, and if there's something in state statute, if we're, if we're going to take some action based on that statute, we need some policies and procedures. But before we do that, I've got half of the townships just in my district, and I'm not going to pass something here without speaking and hearing from the townships. That's what the point was, I tried to get across during the staff meeting. So we've got a meeting coming up with the townships, I think, in August, and at that point in time, we can get some feedback from them before we start taking some action that's going to directly affect them.
The action's already there to affect them. You're just giving it skeleton and process.
It does, definitely, definitely.
I understand your sentiments, and you're worried about votes.
Okay, I'm not going to argue. Thank you.
But we need help now.
Ma'am, you have one more question from Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. The other part to this is the policy that was put in place or in front of us last week. I, for one, like to take more than just a little bit of time in a staff meeting to look it over, and that was my concern. So I, I hear you. I lived on a, on a gravel road for three and a half years, so I understand rural roads, and I would like to know, you know, what we can do to, I don't want to see any problems, and I don't want to see you get hurt, I don't want to see anyone get hurt.
Thank you.
But I want to have a policy that is discussed, is thought out, and I do have, have a chance to look it over before I just say, "Okay." And I do that with every single policy that's put in front of my face.
I have a substantial legal background, the U.S. Congress. I worked for Nancy Caspian for years. I get your day, okay? But I also get, get it done, and that's feet-to-the-fire moment here. I literally have watched cars skid at a 35-degree angle from hitting a series of potholes near my house, and they've been repaired five times, you know, it just, it's not being done right. I have a childhood friend who's a maintainer in Gore next door. Roads are great over there. He came down my mile road once and told me he could fix one mile in one day because he knows how to do it. If there are simple and effective and quick solutions available, and you guys are getting hung up on process, I understand you have other constituents, that's great, but you're, they're in good repair. You need to specify that this isn't to deal with townships are being operated right. It's the oddball-out man-out that, I mean, there's hundreds of people who've worked on this for years, trying to get it done correctly and locally, and we're at your mercy right now because you're the only ones responsive with any, any line of influence to do anything.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McGuire. I don't see any, oh, Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, just to follow up, a couple of comments. So I just want my, my colleagues to know that many of people in the township did watch the staff meeting, and that's, that's what's got them desiring to want to speak to you today. They saw the staff meeting, they weren't necessarily happy with the tone of the staff meeting. The meeting was intended to present this to the commissioners for us to, to receive and then to work on, not necessarily to just give it a rubber stamp, but for us to work on and bring it back, you know, through a process by which at some point it would come before the BOCC for adoption. It wasn't intended to say this is a perfect process, and it doesn't require any, any changes. That wasn't the point. The point is, we wanted to present it and see what commissioners would think, and then hopefully have them work with our legal staff to develop amendments to that that are, that would improve the policy and then bring, bring it back for adoption at some point. Also, I don't know if the manager would want to speak to this or not, but I've, I've asked that rather than waiting until August or February, those meetings may or may not even happen, we don't know what the plan is, and, and the one in August is not even our meeting. It's actually a meeting that they host, and so I don't know that we ought to be conducting our business at their meeting, but there is a way to conduct business with townships, or at least communicate with them. It's called mail. Let's send them a letter, let them know, inform them what we're thinking and contemplating, and let them, give them an opportunity to, to respond back. That's what we should do. I don't think we should delay this for, just because it's convenient on the schedule. I think we should intentionally move forward in some systematic, thoughtful way and get this policy adopted as soon as possible because people are absolutely desperate, and I think that's why she's here today. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you, Ms. McGuire. Next speaker, please. The speaker is Vicki Craig. Welcome this morning. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Vicki Craig, and I live at 11520 South 143 East. I live right next to Barb McGuire. I tried on several occasions to get ahold of Dwight Williams on the roads and never got any answer or never got any response, never got any kind of, any kind of answer from him. And from what I hear, from what other people have said that they got when they talked to him, he was pretty raunchy. I've lived in this place for 30-plus years, and the roads are worse than they've ever The roads have progressively gotten worse and worse. They're down to one lane, and if you meet a car, you have to scoot over towards the ditch. And if you get too close to the ditch, you're going to be sucked into the ditch, and you're going to be stuck. I have friends that have refused to come to my house because the roads are so bad. They don't want to, they don't want to drive on the roads. The road, the road in front of my driveway is, is the worst. It's probably the worst of the whole mile. You have to come to a complete stop if you want to safely drive through that, through that little section there. I come to a complete stop to turn into my driveway, to safely pull into my driveway because it's such a hazard. And if you don't know that those are there, I've seen people, they're, I've seen people's cars come off the, their tires come off the road, they go so fast through those, through those holes. And we did get gravel put down a few weeks ago, and I appreciate that, but they haven't worked the gravel since, and so now the gravel is all gone. It's, it's gone into the ditches and, and it's just, it's done no good. So that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Craig. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is for our county councillor, Mike Papoun. If it's in the statute that we can fix the road, why don't we fix the road?
Yeah, Commissioner Cruz, Mike Papoun, county councillor, you're right. 68-124 Kansas statutes allows a process for the county to go and fix the road and then bill the township for those expenses at a later time. But we feel that we need a policy in place similar to, similar or amended in some fashion to what we brought to the staff meeting because we believe the township needs some sort of due process in order to have an opportunity to fix the road and have an opportunity to, to respond to that, and with that, we feel much safer billing them for the expenses that we would incur rather than just taking action like this morning and having public workers go and fix the road.
But we don't have to wait until a policy is in place to fix the road.
No, we would just be in much better shape getting reimbursement from the township if we waited till we had a policy.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two other people that have shown up that want to speak. This is, we've got a policy with safety and masking and advance. There's enough advance advice for people to sign up and so we can get planned for this. So if any of the commissioners are going to invite a lot of people to come and talk, I would appreciate if they, ask them to follow the guidelines and the rules that we've established as far as public speaking. So that said, Mr. Fletcher, you're here. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the commission.
My name is Gerald Fletcher, 11360 South 143rd Street, East in Mulvane.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Pardon?
He just said his address. Keep going.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
You can address, you can state, state what you want to state to the, to the commission.
Okay. Okay. I'm here to complain about the roads out there in our, our district. And they're really bad. I've got pictures of them, I took them about an hour ago, and, but I don't, they're on my phone, there are no way to show them. But 159th, I went down it right after the rain, and, and that one mile section, it was so rough that a tractor has went before me, and he made some pretty good-sized ruts. And I got a four-wheel-drive pickup, and I had to put it in four-wheel drive, and if I'd slowed down just a little bit, I would have been stuck. So when I got home, I had to wash it because it was pretty muddy. And back in January 2019, my wife fell and broke her hip in her back, and the ambulance had to come and get her. And the ambulance driver told me before he could even leave the house that he had to administer the medication for because of roads was too rough to do it on the way out there. So, and then Dwight Williams, I was wanting to over the roads. I went to a meeting in June, June 25th of last year, and he promised me that they would put gutters and, and culverts in these driveways to keep it from washing out the roads, and nothing's happened since. And the maintainer comes by our road probably about every two months, six weeks to two months, and they get pretty rough. I got potholes all up and down 143rd between 111th and 119th, and that's about all I can say, they're really rough. We need, we need something done, and they're so narrow that I went here about a month ago, right after the rain, I was going to town, and the mailman come meeting me, well, he pulled over and let me, let me by, and when he did, he got stuck. So I had to pull him out, me and one of my neighbors, he had a four-wheel-drive truck too, and we both, it took us both to get him out of that ditch. They're all one-lane roads, they're not a two-lane road in that, in that district.
Okay, Mr. Fletcher. Well, thank you. I don't see any questions. Thank you for sharing your information.
Okay.
Okay, have a good day.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a good day. Next up, Adeline Thornborough.
Good morning. My name is Aldine Thornborough, and I live at 10725 South Ellen in Mulvane. Sorry I didn't follow the exact rules, I didn't know what the rules were, but I appreciate that, and we'll try to do better in the future. But thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak this morning. This is an issue we've been trying to get worked out for years now. We've tried practically everything, and every time we turn around, we find that, oh, by statute, you can't do that. You can't borrow money, you can't do this, that, and the other. I've lived in the area for 10 years now, and when we first moved out there, the mill levy was at four. And over the last few years, they've raised it to 16, but the roads are no better, they're worse. I don't know where the money is going. We can't see any progress, any help, and, and our mill levy has quadrupled. Things are, it's not just that we get flat tires, it's not just that other car parts break, it's now a health and safety concern. I live off of 103rd, which is right down the street from the high school, and the road is one lane. Part of the road is washing away into the street so that, and especially when it's slick like in the winter, that's why it's good to get things done now before the winter season gets here because in January, when somebody new takes over, it's kind of late because then you're already going to be into the ice and the snow. And when a school bus slides off the road into that big hole that's there, then we're going to be sorry we didn't get something done. We're not asking for a handout, we're just asking for a little help. We don't want to take anything away from the other townships. We're not asking for anybody to pay for our business. You know, we've, we've, like I said, we have increased the mill levy, and you can only increase it so far without any return on your investment. Now, maybe if we all chipped in $1,000 for all the households that are out there, you know, maybe we'd have enough money to get something done. But when I was, we have, we live at the end of the cul-de-sac, and I'll be really brief, I know my time is out, but we've had an estimate at $1,700 to clean out what is the township's responsibility. And so now, we're going to have to pay $1,700 to clean out that ditch, and that's not fair.
Okay. Mr. Howell has a question.
Yes, I want to say thank you for being here. I know that it's frustrating for many folks out there, and I want to say I appreciate taking time to come up, and I understand that we have rules, and it's sometimes hard to understand some of our rules, and so I'm glad that we were able to find some grace this morning and have you speak anyway. But I do want to just address kind of the, the, some of the things I think you and I have talked about in the past. We actually had, we had a school bus, I guess, at one point, a few years ago, that did tip over, and we did have a dump truck recently that tipped over by your house.
That's true, at the end of our street, yeah.
And so that, those things actually have happened, not only people getting stuck on the roads, but there is a lot of concerns. We've had some concerns about public safety, when you call 911, having some assurance that we can get to you, and we can get to you quickly, you know, that's, that's a concern by many. So I understand that, please, I think you understand this, and you're welcome to comment, but we're not going to take over the township, that's not our intent. If this, if this policy passes, I think this is going to be a, probably should be a rarely-used tool that we, we hope to encourage the township to hear us and to, and to pay attention to the constituents and keep the roads passable. And if that fails for some reason, then we have this policy, which is already in statute, excuse me, the, the tool's already in statute, but this policy is a framework by which we would use that statute. It's all this is.
Certainly, for the most grievous. Certainly for the most grievous.
Right. And then we would not actually ask Sedgwick County taxpayers everywhere to pay for those township roads. We would actually, that would be borne back to the township through a bill. And then I think we're still exploring the idea of debt set-off, but I believe there's a debt set-off option, where we can actually intercept the property tax dollars if we absolutely had to. Or we could even go to court and settle this in court. But there's case law that says we would likely win that case as long as we follow this process. If there's a process we follow and do by resolution, we would probably likely win a court battle over expenditures related to making a road passable. So that's what this policy is trying to do, is create the framework.
And I think the citizens of Rockford Township, we've had numerous meetings, would support financially and any other way, any of those efforts, as long as we can see that the money's going in the right direction. It's when they keep pouring sand and pouring sand and then scraping it into the ditch, which causes my house to, the house itself hasn't flooded, but my house ends up looking like an island every time it rains. And if we don't pay the seventeen hundred dollars and have an independent person dig out the ditch, then we have to live with a boat moored up next to the house so we can get out. But thank you again for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. And hopefully, if we can just get, you know, a little help when it's needed, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of May twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
The commissioners, you've received a copy of the minutes of the May twentieth meeting. If you had a chance to review, and if there are any other comments, or corrections, or additions. Move to approve.
Second.
Been a motion to approve in second, seeing no other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Gene Woodard from the position of Treasurer for the Park Township Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Councillor. The item is to accept the resignation of Mr. Woodard. I believe in the backup, it indicates that he no longer lives in the township, so isn't eligible to be the Township Treasurer. The Board of County Commissioners will be replacing Mr. Woodard at some point, once we have a suitable candidate. And at this point, we'd ask you to accept the resignation of Mr. Woodard.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
Been a motion in a second to accept the resignation. Any other comment? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, accept the resignation of Darby Gwynn from the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board student position.
Mr. Papoun.
Chairman, Darby Gwynn is one of Commissioner Dennis's appointments to his Citizens Advisory Board. That person has asked to resign, and we'd ask that you accept the resignation.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Darby for volunteering originally to serve. However, her duties as a student preclude her continuance, so I move that we accept her resignation.
Second.
There's a motion to second to accept the resignation. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, resolution reappointing Tanya Buckingham to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the alternate elected official position.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, the county has a grievance board that hears employee grievance matters. It's a three-member board with three active members and three alternate members. Ms. Buckingham is the alternate member for the elected official position on this board, and we'd ask you to reappoint Ms. Buckingham to this position.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Tanya Buckingham to serve on this board.
Second.
The motion is second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, resolution reappointing Susan Erlinwine to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the Department Head position.
And Mr. Papoun, again.
Mr. Chairman, Susan Erlinwine is a regular member of the board. She represents the department head, one of the department heads from Sedgwick County. Ask that you reappoint Ms. Erlinwine to this board.
Okay. Thank you. I know Susan does a nice job as a department head as well, on her other stuff.
Motion to adopt the resolution to reappoint Susan Erlinwine.
Second.
Motion in a second to appoint Susan Erlinwine. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. All the motions have passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item F, public hearing for modifying the boundaries of the Boeing Industrial District of Sedgwick County, Kansas, and renaming said industrial district as the Aerospace Industrial District of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Good morning, Brent Shelton. Welcome to the commission meeting.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, members of the county commission. I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer. And the item before you is a public hearing, and the consideration subsequent to that of a resolution to modify the boundaries, excuse me, and rename the Boeing Industrial District to the Aerospace Industrial District of Sedgwick County, Kansas. To give you a little bit of history, the Boeing Industrial District was incorporated by County Commission Resolution on September tenth, nineteen eighty. Since then, the commission has approved boundary modifications in nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-six, and nineteen ninety-one. Now, in two thousand and twenty, the commission has received four petitions requesting that fourteen parcels be added to the industrial district, and one petition has been submitted requesting a parcel be removed from the industrial district. The county has also received a resolution adopted by the Board of Directors of the industrial district requesting that the Board of County Commissioners do three things. One is to hold a public hearing regarding the requests set forth in the petitions. Two, to modify the boundaries as set forth in those petitions. And three, to rename the industrial district to the Aerospace Industrial District of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Now, the law requires that before the commission can consider these petitions, that the governing body of any incorporated city which is located within the county within three miles of the district shall recommend by resolution that such petition be granted. Both the cities of Derby and Wichita meet this standard, and they have both submitted resolutions recommending the boundary changes. You'll see before you a map that basically gives you an outline of the fourteen parcels that would be added. Those are highlighted in purple. The one parcel at the top of the map is in red, and that one would be one that is no longer, the use of that is not going to be industrial, so they've requested to be removed from the industrial district. The green area is the existing boundaries of the industrial district. And so you would see what it would look like subsequent to the approval of the resolution. So at this time, I would recommend that you open a public hearing. At the conclusion of that, then I would recommend that we approve the resolution that modifies the boundaries of the Boeing Industrial District and then renames the industrial district as the Aerospace Industrial District of Sedgwick County, Kansas. So at this time, I'll stand for questions, or I can give control back to you, and you can open the public hearing. We do have two folks from Spirit and also members of the Boeing Industrial District that are here today. Sam Sackett, who's the Senior Manager for Government Relations and Corporate Communications, and Adam Hoag, Vice President of Manufacturing Services, who is the president of the industrial district. I think he does want to speak. So if you have questions of me, I'll answer them. If not, we can open the public hearing.
Okay, Brent, I do not see any questions right now. Thanks for the presentation. And so we will open, we're going to open for public comment, the meeting for public comment. So anybody from the public want to speak? I understand a couple of you do. So please approach the bench. State your name for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Adam Hoag, Spirit's Vice President of Manufacturing Services, here representing Spirit.
Adam, welcome to the commission.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner, fellow commissioners. Like to thank you all for your willingness to consider this request and then all the support of our business during this challenging time in the industry. Also like to thank you and really commend you all for your leadership over the past months, providing support to the community to safely reopen and keep this pandemic under control. Good job. We at Spirit, working very hard to better understand this changing global market conditions we're under and respond to our customers. Our goal is to continue to do everything possible to keep our employees safe, while still positioning ourselves for long-term success, obviously. We announced last month our partnership with Vier to manufacture ventilators here in Wichita, which quite frankly helps save seven hundred manufacturing jobs that were impacted by the reduction in the rates. We've also spent a lot of time pursuing numerous defense projects that would allow many employees that were supporting the commercial programs to reposition their roles to support the military. As we continue to make improvements to our Wichita facility overall, we appreciate considering this request to update the industrial district boundary that better lines up and reflects the actual industrial footprint that we work under. All four landowners and participants in the industrial district board support the boundary modifications. Happy to answer any questions you might have at this time. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Is there any questions? No, it's any minute. Thank you, and thanks for reminding us that you're the step into the Vier.
Absolutely.
The way to pivot.
Quite an undertaking.
Employees. And I know WSU Tech was involved in helping you on rolling that out as well.
Very much.
Thank you for the presentation, and I don't see any other questions at this time, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Oh, that's all? Okay, okay. You're more than welcome to share your intelligence with us. Okay. All right. Okay, anybody else from the public? I don't see anybody, so we'll close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the bench for further discussion. Thank you. We've been briefed as well on this, Brent. And so it seems to be, if there's no other comments at this point, I'm going to entertain a motion. Oh, Commissioner Hal.
Yeah, just a couple.
I didn't see the line.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions. I don't know if anybody from Spirit would want to comment on this, but I was curious if you have an opinion on the additions or subtractions to the district boundary that was initially proposed. Is there any thought to do support or oppose any of those changes? I would like to know, from your perspective, if there's any opinion on that whatsoever.
Yeah, please. Approach the podium.
Apologies, maybe just a little more clarification around initially proposed. I mean, something different than what's currently proposed.
I'm just saying that there was petitions to add some parcels and to remove a parcel from the boundaries during this process. And so I was just curious if Spirit has any opinion on any of that surrounding property.
Yeah, understood. You know, really, just in having been a part of the site there myself for thirty-three-plus years and working with this, really just coming together the way we do as a team with ourselves, Air Capital Flightline, the others, looking at just what's changed over the years, if you will, and what the utilization is within the boundaries and so forth. It was really just, in my view, you know, cleanup and really getting things back in line with the way they should be, you know, as opposed to years ago, based on the way things are utilized. But again, full recommendation and from all four landowners on this.
Certainly. All right, thank you for the answer. And then this may be for Mr. Shelton. This is another follow-up question. The boundary, as it's drawn there, it is, again, I support people's desire to be in and out of the district. That's fine, but I'm curious, the parcels that are, for example, on the lower-left corner of the district as it's drawn there, there's a number of parcels that are excluded from the district. I'm just curious, were they notified and they had a chance to respond? And they were invited, if you will, to participate in changing the boundaries, if that's what they wanted to do?
As I understand, the parcels, the four landowners are all owned parcels that are used currently for industrial purposes, utilized by Spirit. And those were the ones that were being added because their use is consistent with the use or the designation of an industrial district. So the ones that, to this, are you talking about the ones to the south there?
There's a purple box there. It's a purple box. It's two parcels together, pretty large, and then down south of it, there's two small parcels. But between those, there's a number of parcels that are not included. That's just an example. There may be. Help, sure not, but I'm talking about this area right, right here. There's a number of parcels right there, for example, that are not included. And that's fine. I just was curious, were they invited? Because I am familiar with, there are some businesses that do industrial-type work. I don't know exactly what they do there, but I'm just curious, did they have an opportunity to to understand what this was, and were they invited to petition, if you will, to be included?
That petition would have been done through the Boeing Industrial District. So I can't speak to specifically if all of these landowners were made part of that process, but the ones that are being used in those industrial capacities.
I'm supportive of the desire to go forward. I just wanted to find out if we had some answers to those questions.
I know of no exclusions or no one that was excluded that might have wanted to have participated.
Generally speaking, I think, you know, trying to include those that want to be included and not include those that don't want to be included, that's, I think, my first desire is to hear what they want and try to accommodate that if possible. I think that's what this is. So I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any, so entertain a motion to approve the boundaries of the Boeing Industrial District.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any other comment? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for all you do. Please share our appreciation. All right. Have a good day. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, public hearing for the county's application for a community development block grant funds through the state of Kansas.
Brent Shelton, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner. Commissioners, again for the record, I'm Brent Shelton, Deputy Chief Financial Officer. A couple of weeks ago, you set a public hearing for this morning for the purposes of considering and authorizing the county's application for some specific community development block grants through the state of Kansas, through the Department of Commerce, that would be made on behalf of some of the cities in Sedgwick County. This is part of the CARES Act funds that have been awarded to the state. We have subsequently found out that the grants were awarded on a first-come, first-served basis and have received notice that all those funds have been awarded. We know that two cities in the county did receive funds. So one of the requirements of holding the public hearing is a notice of the same, which was published at least five days prior to the hearing. It was published on June third of two thousand and twenty. Those wishing to speak to the item were offered two opportunities. One, to either appear in person this morning, or to email me with written comments. I'm unaware of anyone present this morning that wishes to address this item, and I have received no emails. So therefore, after consulting with the county's legal department, this morning, I would recommend you do three things. One is to open the public hearing, then close the public hearing, and then third thing would be take no action, because this specific grant opportunity has expired. We're just fulfilling the legal requirements.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. Yes, and thanks for reminding us of how this has been set up. So at this time, we will officially open for any more public comments that we may have received. I don't think we've received any electronically. Kate, could you respond? Okay. So no electronic comments, and nobody's here to speak. So we will close the public comment and bring this item back for further. comment and bring this item back for further discussion and entertain any motions to approve. I comment that in the middle of our information, that part of this whole plan recognizes our mental health care corrections, inmate populations, aging populations. So this kind of hits the sweet spot of what we're trying to do with these cities. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the, or close the public hearing and approve the community development block grant.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other comment? Being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Lindsay's getting the podium, Tom Stoles, County Manager, just want to go over a quick summary of what we're going to be discussing here. Lindsay will give us an overall update and talk a little bit extensively about the community assessment process that we're going through today, complete with an example that we'll put on screen as she'll step us through the process of what a citizen would see as they go through that. And then we have one ask of the CARES money, and that is for EMS equipment that we had discussed during budget discussions a couple of weeks ago, and Lindsay will present that. Rusty is also here to talk if there are questions. So with that, Lindsay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Povoso, your CFO. So Tom has done a nice job of roadmapping you through what we're going to talk about today. So with that, I will just jump in. The very first thing, like he said, we want to talk about is that notice of funding opportunity. So that was posted online last Friday, and it is available for two weeks. So it closes on June 19. We very, very, very much want community responses, and so we are trying hard to get the word out about that and promote it and get responses. As of last night, we had 15 unique entities that had responded to that needs assessment. So I do think, just based on some of the wording I've heard about, some of the questions we received, it might be helpful to clarify a couple of things. So the first thing I want to clarify is this is simply the needs assessment. This is just trying to inform you all of what needs exist in our community and to what extent, because we can use that then to help craft a strategic plan whereby you all will allocate funding to those particular needs. So this is not an application for funding. If, and a group would be eligible under the strategic plan that you all authorize, unfortunately, there will be quite a lot of work that will be involved because this is federal taxpayer money that's being awarded, and so that does come with the same strings for folks receiving the money that we have. So that will mean that when you all determine what those eligibility areas are, we will conduct risk assessments on those entities that might be applicable or eligible for funding to make sure, if they're a government entity, make sure they've had their audits done, that there's no issues of weakness that we would need to make sure to get resolved. Because again, Sedgwick County is on the hook, and our job in finance is to make sure the Board of County Commissioners is protected. Once that's done, there will be some training that happens at the same time for those entities so that they understand what type of documentation is necessary, they understand what type of reporting is necessary, and we also want to make sure they understand that at the end of this, the federal government has made clear that this will be subject to single audit, which is something that governments can go through if they receive a certain level of federal dollars. It also could be subject to the federal government's inspector general. And so unfortunately, these dollars aren't easy money necessarily. There will be some strings attached to that. So I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page about what those expectations are and what this notice of funding opportunity is actually doing for us. So what we thought might be helpful is to quickly walk through this document. And so we are on the front page of sedgwickcounty.org, and you can see just underneath the banner, excuse me, there's the Sedgwick CARES Notice of Funding Opportunity and Solicitation of Information. So a fancy way of saying needs assessment. So everyone can look through this and see maybe what they apply for. I'm going to pretend that I'm a social services agency right now. Maybe I'm providing some homeless support during this time. So I want to see what social services look like. So I can click on that. It gives me some general guidelines about what's eligible, what eligible costs might be, and then what ineligible costs might be. So this looks pretty good. I think I have some eligible costs. So I'm going to scroll down here to the bottom and say, I provide social services in Sedgwick County. That is going to take me to the front page of several pages of our needs assessment. So our entity or organization name for this one, I'm going to be the LPR Enterprises, because I am really creative.
LPR?
Yep.
You're good with these acronyms.
I am good with the acronyms, aren't I? I've worked in government for a minute.
NOFO, NOFO LLC.
That's right. I like it. Well, sorry, I've already got it typed in. Next time, we'll do that. So I am a not-for-profit healthcare provider because I'm providing these services. My street address, 123 North Main. I am located in Wichita. My zip code is 67203. I am small. I don't have a website. My authorized representative, again, is going to be me. Here's a legitimate email and my phone number. And I want to be the one to answer. So you'll see down here, there are two fields called a SAMs number and a DUNs number. These are not required fields, but basically, if you already receive federal funding, you're going to have one of these numbers. So the DUNs number is actually stands for the Data Universal Numbering System. And basically, it is used for businesses. Lenders can use it to go out and look at the long-term information for an entity as well as maybe their stability if they are wanting to do lending information. And then the SAMs number actually generally probably will be the DUNs number. SAMs is the entity where folks go to register and say, I am an entity that's eligible for federal assistance, and they must have that, they must have that registered in order to receive federal assistance. So we're going to use Sedgwick County's number. And I'm going to go to the next page. Have I pursued FEMA public assistance? Not yet. And so I definitely haven't received any. Student or Small Business Association programs? No, I haven't. I'm a not-for-profit. I don't really feel like that qualifies for me. Have I pursued funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services? Yes, I have. Maybe I've asked for some CDC funding. I've asked for $5,000, but I haven't actually received anything yet. CDBG, have I received any? No. And so I don't have to answer that next question. Other funding received? Have I received other funding? Yes, I have some exceptionally generous donors. Yes, ma'am.
Lindsay, so for those out there who aren't familiar with all these acronyms, is there a way to, like that CDBG, I mean, is there a way to, I mean, not everybody's, I mean, maybe they have, maybe they're not. I don't know.
We can definitely add to it, but I would tell you, for the most part, if they've received it, they know the acronym. But yes, we can do that. That's a good point. So we can tweak that, and we will get that adjusted after this meeting. So again, I have some really, really generous donors who have given me $50,000. And so who are those sources? Just individuals. I'm not going to name them here. And I don't have to, because this is just a needs assessment.
David Dennis.
Okay, so here's where we get into a little more specific information where we need good data, because one of the big parts of this is going to be, was it eligible for CARES funding? Is it a cost that's incurred between March 2, 2020, and the December 30, 2020? Was it included in the 2020 budget or not? And have, I forgot my third requirement. Oh, COVID-related, of course. So they, of the annual budget, well, we're going to pretend that they did what Sedgwick County did and adopted in August 14 of last year. Our total budget for what we provide is $800,000. We have 10 employees. We thankfully have not had to furlough or lay off anyone. And we only, we have about half of our staff who have been dedicated to COVID-related work. So have we experienced closures? No. But maybe we've adjusted our hours of operation to try and limit the impact. So yes, we've operated from 8:00 to 12:00 p.m. each weekday instead of the normal 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. So then we need to know, again, what, and this is something that came up, I think, in our questions and discussion yesterday. So the left column shows costs that have already been incurred. What do they think they would be eligible for, to get reimbursed for today? The column on the right says, tell us what you think your future costs will be through the end of December. Again, this will be very valuable information for commissioners to use in setting your strategic plan and identifying how many dollars need to go to each pot of funding, depending on what it is, and also help you get those dollars to the highest priority areas. So the cost for expanding existing services, well, we haven't been in the position to do that, and I don't think I'm going to expand services. We've got enough on our plates just dealing with what we've got. If I've done food assistance programs, sure, I've been trying to get some boxed meals out and things. So I'm going to say I've spent $10,000. We have another six months left, so I am projecting to spend another $20,000 because I think this is a really good program and it's working really well. I haven't done any workforce development. I haven't done any crisis counseling. We have spent a little bit money on mental health services, but we've had other areas of the community maybe that have stepped up and provided some of those services. So I don't think I'm going to have any additional costs for that going forward, and I don't have any governmental assistance to report right now. Protective measures? Yeah, we've put in maybe a couple screens to protect. We're not going to have any more costs for that. We bought some masks, but I think we're good on that. We spent $50 to get it installed. Now disinfection costs of service areas. I have done that, and I know that that's going to be a critical part of keeping this up going forward. So I'm going to say that I think I've spent $500 today. I'm going to keep up the same level of what I'm doing, so I expect to have another $2,000 through the end of the year. I haven't leased anything. I haven't had to have IT hardware or software to do what I'm doing. This is mostly in person. Now, other costs, maybe I've done some other adjustments that weren't identified above. So I'm not going to tell you what they are because I don't have that ability, but I am going to tell you that I've incurred those and I have other costs. And when it comes time for eligibility in an application, I'll be able to explain that. I'm not a robot. Oh, boy, this is going to be exciting. And ta-da. I will now, at that email address I entered, get a bounce back that says, thank you for having responded. So this is not necessarily an arduous process. We're not asking for documentation or details at this time. This is literally just to give you all the feedback that you need in order to make good decisions about how to allocate those funding and get it to the right spots. So this will be used to put together that strategic plan. We again hope to come to you with some recommendations that first week of July on what core program areas would be. Again, recommendation is to have three or four core program areas as well as a strategic reserve, because we know we're only in June. This money is supposed to last us through December 30, and we know, unfortunately, the rules continue to change. And so we want to make sure that we're in a position to be able to respond to that. And then the rest of the funding we'll need to use to determine, how much do you want to use for county's eligible expenses versus other entities? And so we'll have those discussions. Now, we know we're not going to be able to fund everything. Either it's not going to be eligible, or maybe it's not going to be the right type of expense for governmental funding. And so we're not going to try, we're going to try really hard not to leave people high and dry. So at the same time, we come to you with a strategic plan, we're going to come to you with two other resources. That first resource is going to be a consolidated list of every resource we can find for help. Private, public, it doesn't matter. We're going to try and assemble it in one spot. So maybe the county's not in a position to help, but maybe somebody else is. And so we want to make sure that we're connecting folks to those resources. And then we also are going to use this great information that we get through this needs assessment, and we're going to use that to help you all compile information to respond to Commissioner O'Donnell's request a couple of weeks ago during budget hearings, where we know that our legislative and congressional delegations want to know what needs exist in our community. And so we're going to have some really great information to be able to share with them specifically what is happening here so that if the county or CARES funding is in a position to help, they can understand what those needs are and maybe help craft some future legislation to help for that. If folks have questions about what we just talked about, we have two ways for them to get information. The one we prefer is our email address that's been set up. It is sedgwickcares, all one word, at sedgwick.gov. And that way, we can make sure we're tracking the information. We can use this as a venue to provide answers for the frequently asked questions we're getting, and we can monitor what's happening and be able to report that more easily. The other opportunity would be to call 660-7148, and that is listed in our press release so that folks, if they just want to ask a quick question, are able to do that. So those are the two ways we would like to receive questions. I would encourage you all, if you get questions, please to direct them that route so that we can make sure we're giving the same consistent advice and counsel to folks. So with that, yes, sir?
Okay, you have two questions. You ready to take them?
I am.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz, first, please.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thanks for getting this done. I know that was a lot of work to every single person involved, your finance team, our webmaster, anybody else who's had any hand in getting this accomplished. I did, I think this is a really great presentation. I had a couple of questions yesterday, one from the city administrator in Park City who was filling out the form, and he asked about if he closed out because he didn't have all the information, if he would lose all of his data. And that is the case. They will lose all their data once they fill this out. So I'm a little concerned that only 15 people have filled this out. And so I wonder what our communications plan is. I mean, if we could hold a press conference with The Eagle and all stations to see exactly how we can get this, the word out a little bit better. I've put it on my channels a couple of times. So that, I think, is really important because we have way more people in this community, I think, that could probably benefit from these funds. Second of all, this presentation today, I've also requested that Tony has maybe taken the clip of this and popped it on the website and then posted it on our social site so that we can maybe have this walkthrough instructions. I think it's very helpful. So I appreciate you doing this today. I don't really have any questions. Those are more of my comments. But I guess the communication aspect from how we're going to be getting this out, I see Dion in the back of the room. If we could get something in The Eagle, KSN, Kay Witch, all of these, have we utilized those mechanisms yet? Because this is really important for people to know because there's not a lot of time left.
I can speak to some of that. We have, I have seen an article in The Eagle about the opportunity. We have pushed it on social media frequently. We have emailed, I think Tom and I probably have emailed the same list of people now, based on what I heard from him yesterday. We have gotten the word out to every single township, city, everybody on that list of FEMA-eligible folks, including all of the not-for-profits, the not-for-profit chamber. We've pushed it out to pretty much every entity we can think of, and I have seen it shared quite a bit on Facebook and Twitter. But in terms of a dedicated media strategy, I can work with our comms team after the meeting and see if there's anything we can do to maybe bolster our efforts.
Maybe we'll see a rush at the end. I just, you know, I would hate for someone who, you know, needs the funds to not have an opportunity if this is a hard and fast close next Friday.
Sure.
Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate that presentation.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I would echo the comments of Commissioner Cruz. I will say thank you for doing a great job. This took a tremendous amount of work to settle this up, and I think we're in a really good position trying to accomplish this enormous task. And so thank you for your great work. But I am curious, if someone, I guess two questions. If someone gets into this process, they don't have an answer or they don't, not sure what to do, is there a recommendation, again, kind of what Commissioner Cruz said, is it better for them to stop and try to answer a question or ask questions and get answers to be more, a little more accurate, or we want them to go and just do the best they can and maybe ask the questions later, and you'll resolve, if you will, any concerns they have on things they're not certain about?
I apologize. I would say the latter. Go ahead and complete it to the best of their ability, recognizing that this is simply a needs assessment. If it turns out that they have missed something significantly, let us.
If it turns out that they have missed something significantly, let us know. We can go in and amend data. This doesn't have to be perfect. This isn't the application. So we just need to get a good idea to give you all a good idea.
The way I would say it is they're not going to be audited or held accountable for what their answers are. This is simply trying, helping us trying to figure out what, what we have to do in the future. So I would, I would agree with that answer. And then I guess along that line, if someone misses the opportunity and they, in fact, don't fill this out. We're going to be left with less information than we would like. But there will still be an opportunity in the future to actually make an application for funding.
Absolutely.
This is not necessarily limiting their ability to do that in the future.
Right.
There's two separate issues entirely, right?
Absolutely. We will not look at whether they've put it in. We will not hold them to any of the answers they've given. We, as well as anyone, understand how flexible and fluid this situation is.
Likewise, if they fail to do this entirely, but they can, you know, say, when the next window opens up and they want to actually apply for funding, they can still do that. It's just that we would like to, we would like them to do this now so we know what to expect.
Yes, exactly.
All right, thank you for, thank you for those answers. Thank you, Chairman.
And Lindsay, thanks. Commissioner Hal, you're absolutely correct. I just want to make sure that this is our needs assessment stage. And then we will, and even our, when we come back with our strategic plan or the size of buckets for whatever. That's when the application process for any entity, person, I'm not sure how many people can do it. But it's mainly, can individuals end up applying? It's mainly business and entities, right?
So for the needs assessment, anyone can put in anything they want and we would welcome that. The, depending on who actually receives funding, that will be up to you all through that strategic plan. And we'll also hear from Whit O'Brien's on what they recommend in terms of where the greatest area of need is and making sure we're getting that addressed.
Okay, and then can you remind again for questions? Because I've had a series of phone calls with some people and tried, that were, I think there would be important for them to have their feedback into us. But Sedgwick Cares at?
Sedgwick.gov.
Sedgwick.gov.
And that Sedgwick Cares is all one word, no underscores or anything like that.
Because I'm hoping I'm not giving them information that would be conflicting for what you do. So I need to make sure, reference these people back to this.
I appreciate that very much.
Can you go to the very first page? Just, and that's all I wanted to. So at the very bottom, when you have these, you said, I'm a, I'm a whatever, I'm a nonprofit. Can you, I think at the very bottom, there's all the, about five categories that you could click on. Can you show those again?
Oh, I'm sorry, the very, very front page.
Right, right. So, yeah, just explain, they're right, at this point for our gathering information, we've put them into five categories. Is this Whit O'Brien's advice as well and you all?
Yes, yes, that was, that was done in conjunction with Whit O'Brien. And so the five categories are cities, which really we would allow any government. But that's how, those are the folks we've actually heard from who likely have the expenses.
Cities, townships, in Sedgwick County.
Right, they must be located within Sedgwick County. Otherwise their counties will receive funding from the state. The K through 12 education in Sedgwick County, public health assistance.
Can I ask about, about the schools?
Sure.
Like Andover School District that touches Wichita?
So we would, we would welcome hearing from anyone who has, for this assessment. We would welcome hearing from anyone who has needs. Because that helps us, those, those kids live in our county. But that does not necessarily guarantee that that will be the funding down the road. We're also continuing to get information from the Department of Education on a regular basis about how they're going to allocate funding. And so this will be something we'll keep a close eye on through the process.
So if there's a crossover school district into our county, then they, they may have to talk with the state as well for state funding versus us.
Right, well, and even.
Want to figure that out?
And even school districts in our own county, if the state's going to fund it equitably across all counties through their Board of Education. And that would be something we would want to make sure we're not positioning ourselves to do any damage.
I think the, the top person at, I heard today that like the top person at the state school district. K through 12 is going to issue their guidelines maybe like July 10th, I heard.
Okay.
So I think we're in process of watching this. It kind of falls in our timeline. So the next category is?
Public health assistance.
Who would that include? Examples?
Let, actually, let's, dang it. Let's go up and look at each of these categories so that way I do not misspeak. So you can see the eligible, now it's, the term here is applicant. Not really an applicant, it's a needs assessment. But these are the entities that we've identified. Again, not a commitment or a promise that that will be included in funding down the road. But it's just trying to give some structure and help folks understand if we, if they would have an opportunity to provide that feedback to us.
Okay. And then the fourth category is?
So we looked at social services.
Social services, that's all of their nonprofit, or is that, that's where the nonprofits would go?
Right, for the most part, I would expect it to be there. There could be other not-for-profits in some of those area, other areas as well. But certainly I would expect many of the not-for-profits that come to mind to come to this category.
And obviously for-profit social services as well.
Absolutely.
And then what was the final category?
The final is our catch-all category. And that is other unanticipated needs assistance programs. So that is, you know, I know we had a question last week from the chamber about this. This would be where businesses would have the opportunity.
Okay.
To complete it if they don't otherwise fit within one of those other categories.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you for the presentation. It's really helpful for, for all of us. And I think it's important that as much as we want to try to help individually, we ought to make sure that we follow up with that. Those questions to send them to our Sedgwick. Sedgwick Cares at sedgwick.gov or the phone number 660-7148.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? Lindsay, thank you. This is not anything to vote on, I don't think, is it? It's a receiving file?
I'm not done yet. You don't get to get rid of me that quickly. I'm sorry. We have two more quick categories to talk through. And the final category will be an ask where I will ask for a vote. So if it's okay, I'll move to that next category, also related to COVID, of course. So I want to give you a quick update on where we stand with our spending so far year-to-date. The first expense we've seen in our system actually was on March 2nd. We have spent to date 1.1 million out of the county's general fund for COVID-19 related expenses. The bulk of that is on medical supplies. And so that includes masks, gowns, gloves, those types of things to keep people safe. That has about $430,000 of that 1.1 million. Another 140,000 has been spent on custodial supplies. So making sure that we have disinfectant, disinfectant wipes and all of that. So that we are in a position to keep our folks safe. We have spent another $95,000 on cleaning surfaces. So having folks come in and actually clean our surfaces. So that includes things like the jail, juvenile detention facility, JRF. Lots of the corrections facilities, some spaces here in this building actually. And additionally, some vehicle cleaning, ambulances and those types of things. So, and then we have another $95,000 that is set aside of that 1.1 million for future costs associated with the management services. We've entered into with BKD, DRS and our grant writer. Then within the fire general fund, we have spent $25,666. Mostly for an N95 mask fitting machine, as well as N95 masks. Those likely will be costs that can be reimbursed out of the CARES fund. And we'll bring that to you all for consideration once we've got our documentation prepared with Whit's assistance. So that is what has happened within our property tax-supported funds. You all have authorized us to have some additional budget authority within CARES itself. And so to give you a quick report on where we stand with that. We have spent or encumbered just under 1.3 million of our CARES funding. 462,000 of that, we've talked about before, is for the COVID stipend, what we had called the hero pay. Another $26,000 so far for temporary positions that have been added to provide support. And we know that that number will grow as those health department positions are brought on. We have spent another 30,000 for operating supplies like hand sanitizer, foam, signage, the barriers. That we have throughout the building like those sitting at your desk. Another 140,000 for custodial supplies. Another $186,000, again, for medical supplies like gloves, masks, gowns. That type of thing, as well as testing supplies. So the COVID testing supplies and services. An additional 60,000 from CARES funds for cleaning services. And then you all at the end of April authorized us to transfer 130,000 of CARES funding into the general fund. And into the fire district fund for some of the costs that had been incurred through then. But obviously, as we just reported, there's still a significant amount sitting in those county and fire general funds. And we will seek reimbursement from that before long. In addition, we have spent 122,000 on the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act mandatory leave. So if you remember, they said we could have the two weeks of emergency paid sick leave. Plus some time for expanded family medical leave. So that has totaled to date, since that program went into place at the beginning of April, about 122,000. So where does that leave us? You started with 99.6 million from the federal government. We have spent about 1.4 million of that between those two categories we just talked about. And so that leaves us with a balance of 98.2 million today. Now, we've also heard, and you all authorized budget authority for the elections office. To spend some CARES funding that it received from the Secretary of State's office. And so that had been capped at 420,000. To date, they have spent or encumbered 99,846. A lot of that has been toward high-speed ballot scanners, as well as ballot drop boxes, more than 700 of those. And so as these costs continue to accrue, we'll do a similar setup like this and talk through it. And we are working to prepare some good reporting for you. And certainly that will be ready by the time Brent's external expenditure reimbursement group is stood up. So we do have a couple of requests out to the organization. We know that there have been some costs that departments have borne that have not gone through these other funding sources, these funding streams we've already talked about. And so this Friday, we are asking for folks to give us a report on how much they have spent. Also how much they think they will spend. That will also be a useful part for your needs assessment and the strategic plan that we'll put together for you. In addition, we have asked them to tell us what does the short-term and the long-term impact of COVID look like? We know during the decision package workshop a couple of weeks ago, we heard from the district attorney who talked about the impact of COVID lasting into next year. And so we know that we need to relay that information to our congressional delegation and to others. So that maybe there's either some loosening restrictions on the CARES funding we've received to help accommodate that. Maybe there's future funding to help with that. But we know that this impact is not going to end nice and neatly on December 30th. So we will get that information compiled and back to you soon. So unless there's any questions on those, I'll move to the final part of my presentation with the request.
I don't see any questions.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
So you all had heard about some equipment needs that were necessary for EMS during the budget discussions. And we have worked with our consultant to understand if those are CARES eligible expenses. Those are not pieces of equipment we want to fail in the midst of a pandemic. And so while the strategy for funding that is still being worked through, whether, because of the type of equipment, whether it is FEMA eligible. And maybe whether we could get reimbursed for it through that. Or if it is simply a CARES expense outright is where we stand today. And so we're working through that. But we know that we want to get that process started again because CARES money requires that we make payments by December 30th. And so that means we have to put in the orders, receive the orders and process the payments by then. So we do not want to waste time. So based on that, I want to ask for your authority to establish 2.5 million dollars of budget authority in the CARES fund. And I'll give you a little detail on what that's for. Roughly 1.6 million of that is for EMS durable equipment, which would include an oxygen bottle lift, suction devices, 30 stair chairs. Seven physio control auto, automatic chest compression devices, excuse me. 100 physio control automatic external defibrillators and 40 monitors defibrillators. So those items comprise roughly 1.6 million. We also want to ask for portable ventilators and IV pumps, which total about 166,000. And then 30 power load cot systems for roughly 745,000. So all told, the specific dollar amount from the estimates we have today is 2,468,635. That is what is behind the 2.5 million dollar ask for budget authority that I'm making. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would recommend you authorize the establishment of budget authority in that amount.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that you're able to look at these for CARES funding. I think that's important. So I'd move that we authorize budget authority for 2.5 million dollars for the EMS equipment.
Second.
Okay, thanks for your comments and your motion. I don't see any other questions at this time, so we will, Madam Clerk, we'll have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Thank you, Lindsay.
My pleasure.
For all your work. Thanks to your staff.
I will pass that along.
I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item I, partnership agreement with KDOT to purchase and preserve right-of-way for Northwest bypass project.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to that, can we talk a little bit more about CARES, a couple of things?
Okay, sorry if I missed your delight. So Commissioner Dennis, comments? David, wait just a second. We have a comment from Commissioner Dennis.
While we're on CARES, a couple of things that we probably ought to talk about. First of all, we've heard things from the news about the people that are trying to visit with their relatives that are in nursing homes. And they're not able to get in. I'd received a phone call from a lady this morning whose father-in-law is in a nursing home. And it's, the lack of family contact is causing mental health issues for the patients that are in the, in the facilities. And so I don't know what the solution is. I did talk to Tom Stoltz this morning about it briefly. But what I'd like to do is see if there's anything that we can work with, with the nursing homes and the hospitals and everyone that's involved in this. To see if there's some kind of solution where the, we can still get that familiar, familiar contact. That is so important to human development and to keep the mind fresh. So I, again, I don't know what the solution is. I felt very bad when I was discussing this with this lady this morning. Because her father-in-law is having some significant health issues as a result of the lack of, of contact with the family. So what I, what I'm asking is, is there something that we can do as our health department and Dr. Menz is coordinating with, with these organizations? Whether there's some kind of isolation capability that we can bring the people together and not contaminate the rest of the facility? I don't know the solution. I just know that there's a significant problem. And so I'd like to take a look at what we could do to help this issue. I think Commissioner Cruz has some comments and then I've got one other thing I'd like to talk about with COVID. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I too have had some phone calls. I actually spoke with a son who was in Hawaii about his family member who was in a facility. And, you know, CMS has some very strict guidelines about how they operate or how facilities operate. And as much as, I completely agree with you. I mean, interaction with family members is, is a, is an important part of healing. It's an important part of not being isolated and familiarity. So I get that. But these businesses, because But these businesses, because that's essentially what they are, each individual residence, I wonder if... It's almost like we're kind of telling them how to operate. And I want to be careful because I think it's important that, you know, when we come I just think we need to be careful, I guess, because, you know, this is the most vulnerable population of folks. I really would hate... I mean, a lot of the clusters we're seeing are in nursing facilities. And that's, I guess, how do we get to where we want to be without having another outbreak in one of these facilities? So I support trying to find a solution because my heart breaks for those. I mean, especially this person is on hospice, so their days are very, very limited. And that... So I'm willing to work and support something. I just don't know what it is.
Can I just comment real quick? This is ironic because I've just visited. My aunt is 89 years old, and she's in a care home. Visited with her twice, and most recently Friday. And that particular care home requires that it's a predetermined set-up time. And I showed up, I fill out a deal, they check my temperature. I never go into the facility. I go around to a waiting area that was in the shade, and then they brought her out, and we sat and visited in an open-air environment. And I was prohibited to go inside. I just kind of thought maybe... I asked one of the guys, I said, "Well, that's what we're all doing to make sure we don't have the spread." So maybe the industry needs to talk to each other on how these people can go visit. Because I've done it twice, and I know my cousin, her daughter sees her every week, and she said, "I have to go through the same thing." So I think there's a way to visit if the particular facility. I'd be glad afterwards to share the name of the facility where she's at, and maybe they may reconnect facilities on best practices, how you can do that. And it was very rewarding, obviously, for me as well and for my aunt. You know, she doesn't get around very well at all, so they have to assist her out there to a chair. But it's very, very good. And I would agree with everything you're saying about they need... The elderly need that. They miss the... They miss it. And, you know, I miss them, too. But so anyway, I'll share that information after the meeting with both of you, so maybe we can do something. Tom, you have anything to add?
Just Commissioner Dennis and I had this brief conversation this morning, and we have known that this has been an issue since the onset of COVID, the separation and isolation of those in communal living circumstance. We've had one presentation so far of, I don't know how else to describe it, like a pod technology where it is a physical barrier that can be mobily set up and moved so that two people can have a conversation and see one another and be able to talk back and forth. So we're exploring those types of components. And then Commissioner Dennis and I even talked about making that a situation where it's mobile and could be driven to various locations instead of a fixed location site. Another thing, and Chairman, what you just brought up, I think we could do some work in communications to try to build a network between nursing facilities or communal care facilities so they can share that type of thought. The bottom line is, I can't see any time in the future where people like us can go into nursing homes. It's just so fragile with the state of this virus. So the people inside the home will have to come to the exterior, no matter what solution we come up with. It's a question of what that solution is. And we have decent weather now, so you could have outside visits, but we know that will change when the seasons change. So we have to have some type of component or piece of equipment that will allow for that to continue, because I don't think this will end. This type of isolation for our most vulnerable population won't end anytime soon. So we will give that due diligence effort. We're always on the lookout for testing changes, different kinds of PPEs, different kinds of ways of doing business, because this is so fluid and dynamic and is changing week to week. We will keep our eye out for that type of component that we could... And bring it back to a CARES expense to make quality of life better for our community. So thank you.
And I would add that this was only recent, where I was able to face-to-face before it was... They had blocked them off. It was telephone calls and Facebook or FaceTime Live is what we were doing before. But that's just recent, the facility. So anyway, okay. Commissioner Dennis, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate all the commissioners thinking about this. I agree with Commissioner Cruz that we don't want to get into the business of telling nursing homes how to do their job. They're a separate business. But it's something that we really, truly need to talk about. But let me go on to the second issue that I think we probably ought to start thinking about. If you recall, when we make the recommendations on how to proceed in the different phases, we set the gathering size at 20. And I'm not sure that that's appropriate today. I don't know if we should say that we need to increase that to 50 or leave it at 20. I just don't know what the will of the board is on going forward. But I think that that's kind of a dated requirement that we put on. So I would entertain some discussion on whether or not that we ought to modify that discussion. Thank you.
Well, I don't... Personally, I've seen a lot of, you know, Dr. Menz, everybody said something till July 1st, and others... The governor has a phased plan, Dr. Norman has his plan, Dr. Menz has his... They're all our recommendations. And so I was comfortable just leaving it where it is as we go through the month of June to get to July. But Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Can you... Can we reiterate what Dr. Menz's recommendation was last week?
We can. And let me start off by saying, and Mike can correct me if I misstate her, or any commissioner can. The commission, a couple of weeks ago, made the decision to follow ADASRA as a guideline, a non-regulatory plan, and move the phases as that plan calls for. So on June 8th, that went from Phase 2 to Phase 3, and the gathering size with that goes from what we had said, or what the commission had said, which was 20, to now 45. So that's how I'm reading this, that the commission, the Board of Health, made the decision to follow the plan. The governor has since come out, just recently, and made a similar recommendation at the phase move. Dr. Menz, on Friday, gave his guideline opinion that we should remain in Phase 2 till, I believe, July 3rd with keeping a gathering size at 20. He views that as best practice. So where that leaves the community is a number of opinions out there, none of which are regulatory at this time. So these are best practices that people can choose to or choose not to follow. Dr. Menz is not here, and I didn't know we were going to go down this path, but I've talked with him, who has talked with him, and I think his concern and the reason for his opinion on Friday was he's watching human behavior out in the community. And he's seeing gathering sizes, and he's seeing no masks, and he's seeing things that are concerning to him as a physician. And he's also... All of these physicians, the medical community, the hospital communities, are reading the tea leaves around the country of what goes on in that kind of environment, and I think they are concerned. So our data today, which we all have contact with on our website, which are numbers, which the community has the same access you do, we seem to be, and we had our hospital visit on Monday, we seem to be still maintaining there are some numbers which are trending in the wrong direction, but not to a point which I think calls for special action. That's up to you all. So that's where we sit today. It can be viewed as somewhat confusing, but I think for the public to remember, these are guidelines and opinions, and at the end of the day, the community will drive how this goes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. I appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Dennis. I think we ought to be a little more crisp on what we're asking people to do. It is confusing between what the state is recommending or saying versus Dr. Menz versus the County Commission. If you're out there, it's... They're not sure what to follow. And I know that this is what we call a recommendation. And by that word, I think what we mean is we're not intending to enforce anything. But if somebody wants to be a strict... They want to be in strict compliance with what's being recommended, what do they do? What is the directive of Sedgwick County? I don't know that they definitively really know what that is, because there's disagreement and there's multiple opinions out there of what should be happening. So I think we ought to address what is our recommendation of the Board of Health. And I would go back to what we talked about a couple of weeks ago. I know that the numbers have had a slight increase. In fact, that's the words I think Dr. Menz used, was there was a slight increase. And I believe that if you understand some of the changes that have happened in the last couple of weeks, I think it makes some sense. I would expect some slight increase based on activity. But is it alarming? What's going on in the hospitals? We're still having trouble getting reliable data from our hospitals in terms of what they're experiencing inside those walls. We don't know what their capacity is. We don't know how many admissions they have. So if we're going to tailor our orders based on what's going on inside the hospitals, which has always been the reason why we started this in the first place, we don't have... We don't really have the right data, in my opinion, to make the best decisions. So my opinion is, it's less confusing for us to at least align with the state and follow the ADASRA plan at the very least. I would rather even a little bit further, but I think you've got a variety of opinions out there, and I think that the public deserves some crisp policy, and I don't think we're doing that. So I think we ought to speak to this. And I would agree with Commissioner Dennis that we ought to discuss it and be very clear with what we're asking the public to do. And I have a comment on the long-term care facilities in a moment. If we're done with this discussion, I'd like to go back to that for just a moment as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Papoun. So I have the 2014 statute pulled up, and it lists... It's 65-119, duties and powers of the local health officers, contagious disease, confidentiality of information, disclosure, when? Any county or joint board of health or local health officer having knowledge of any infection or contagious disease or of death of such disease, and it goes on and on and on and on. What happens when these three entities that are listed in this statute or an or, what happens when they disagree?
Well, Commissioner, as we've stated on various occasions, we believe that Dr. Menz has the authority pursuant to that statute pursuant to some of our charter resolutions, which in light of the governor's recent signing of the House Bill 2016 may be null and void now. But we've always felt that Dr. Menz has the authority to issue an order that goes beyond the gathering order that the County Commission can order as the Board of Health or that Dr. Menz can order. He has more authority in that regard to control infectious diseases than the County Commission. Now, under the new House bill, any order that Dr. Menz would issue can now be rescinded by the Board of County Commissioners. But that's a recent event. It's so recent that yesterday, this bill was published in the Kansas Register and is now law, official law in the state of Kansas. But essentially, right now, you have equal authority to issue gathering orders. He has the authority to go beyond that, which you can make recommendations to him beyond that, but then you also have the authority to rescind that or nullify it if you don't think his order is appropriate. There's no real hierarchy in this board versus Dr. Menz in terms of issuing these orders. In response to some of the comments that Commissioner Howell has made, it's much easier for us to try to come up with some kind of standard order that would be applicable to citizens in the county and draft something like that pursuant to the statute if that was the will of the commission. But when you're just dealing with recommendations, it's nothing. I mean, this board can make recommendations, the Board of Health, Dr. Menz can make recommendations in his role as the health officer, CDC can make recommendations, the governor can make recommendations, Dr. Norman can make recommendations, and all they are are recommendations. If this board wants more finite guidelines, we could work with Dr. Menz to come up with an order that would set out those guidelines. And if it was with your blessing, those orders could stand. But I don't see that that's been the will of the board right now to issue finite orders, and as such, we're just dealing with recommended guideline... Recommendations from various entities, as the chairman mentioned earlier.
Well, thank you for that. You know, I think it's important that we remember who the experts are in this. I mean, I haven't spent years studying infectious disease. I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I mean, it stands to reason that none of us have up here. This is a very important time to listen to people who have the knowledge base that we need. And if Dr. Menz is recommending something, I think it's important we listen to him. We listen to the physicians in our community. I mean, it's out of an abundance of caution that we do these types of measures. And when we enacted our stay-at-home before the state of Kansas, I think that was a very wise decision and could be the reason why we're seeing what we're seeing today. Now, in light of all of, you know, the social unrest that's happening, there have been a lot of gatherings. A lot of the gatherings that I attended, I did see almost everyone wearing masks in the community. And I would encourage those who have attended those protests to go out and get a test. I am going to receive a test. But what's happening in our community and, you know, I think to now go back and do something different than our health official has done last Friday, I think creates more confusion. And if at all possible, right now, we need clarity, we need togetherness, we need people to understand that, you know, the recommendations by our local health officer are based on research and peer conversations. So that's what I would say, is that I think it's important to maintain a unified front with the experts who are providing us the information. Thank you.
Okay. So what is the will of the board? We could make a motion to that we agree with the recommendation of Dr. Menz and to be consistent with his recommendation, and we recommend that we follow the recommendation.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. We could invite Dr. Menz to another meeting and try to get the Board of Health and Dr. Menz on the same page for a consistent order, but that would be up to the board and Dr. Menz whether you want to engage in that activity or not.
Well, again, there's a difference between an order and a recommendation. That's right. Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that we have invited Dr. Menz to talk to us. I agree that he's the expert on the health issues that are involved in this. We also, as the Board of Health, have to recognize that we have to listen to more than just the experts on the health issues, because we have to worry about several other things. We have to worry about the economic impact of any issues. We have to worry about the behavioral health issues that are involved in anything that's involved in this. Last week, we just got a briefing that we've had nine people commit suicide in the last two and a half weeks. Those are all directly impacted by what these orders are. So I agree with Commissioner Cruz that we have to listen to the health experts, but we also have to take a look at the other aspects that are involved in this. So I would hope that we'd get Dr. Menz in here personally. I know we pay him an awful lot of money, and having him talk to us on the phone, I don't think is the best way for us to do business if we're trying to make decisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, Tom, I guess we can try to get Dr. Menz to come talk to us in the next staff meeting or the next commission meeting. Okay. I knew Dr. How... Unless there's anybody else, Dr. How... Commissioner? I should have said Professor How.
Just a final comment on that part for myself. I think that it's... My opinion is, if we would be very clear that we have no directive of Sedgwick County, and I like that word because that's the word that's used in the law that was passed, that Sedgwick County has no directive. It is truly just recommendations.
It is truly just recommendations or advisory only. I think as long as we clarify that, I think that's fine. I can leave it alone. I think that to take different expert opinions out there and tailor your behavior around those ideas, knowing that there's nothing that's been mandated or directed, I think that's a reasonable balance between those two ideas, and so I would be fine with that. But back to the original comments of Commissioner Dennis regarding the nursing homes, I would just tell you, I spent three years visiting my mother as often as I could, initially nearly every day, but as time went on, it decreased somewhat because it just was a very long process. My mom passed away last September, and she had mental health problems the entire three years that she was there. And I cannot imagine what these families are going through right now. One of the challenges we had with her is she did not have a cell phone, she did not have access to technology, and they don't even have really community TVs or technology available to the residents at that long-term care facility. And I think in terms of the CARES money, I think we ought to maybe consider having someone from staff maybe hold the hands of these folks and encourage them to access CARES funds with technology. And I would like to see big screen TVs set up with Zoom-type meetings, a membership that these folks can dial in, maybe multiple sets of these, so it's a better experience. I know my experience during the Zoom meetings has actually been pretty positive. It's almost like you're in the same room. You can talk to each other almost naturally, and I think that's a pretty good solution to one of these problems. I don't know that any of the long-term care facilities have actually thought that as a solution, but the CARES funds, that's what it's for. I think we ought to try to encourage that type of solution and maybe even help them get there because I think that that's a perfect balance, trying to get the best experience possible for these residents. We just need to have someone, I think, help get that in place as quickly as possible. And I'll tell you what, if my mother was alive today and I had that, I would feel at least it's a pretty good experience, and she would probably feel like she's getting time with her family. But what I understand that's happening right now in the same facility is virtually no access to technology, and I think that is extremely difficult for those residents, especially and their families. And so I think that we ought to lean on some technology and maybe even have someone in our own organization help this move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other questions or comments at this point? Anything closing? No? Okay. Let's go back to the next item. Let's refresh with the next item, Ms. Please.
Item I, partnership agreement with KDOT to purchase and preserve right-of-way for the Northwest Bypass Project.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner David Spears, Director of Public Works. We are requesting your approval of an agreement with KDOT to extend our partnership to purchase right-of-way for the Northwest Bypass Project. The project will connect US 54 near 167th Street West between Goddard and Wichita to K96 in Mays and provide an interstate-level bypass around Northwest Wichita. The Kansas Department of Transportation, Sedgwick County, Mays, Goddard, and Wichita began setting aside funds to purchase and preserve right-of-way for the project in 2006. Under the current partnership five-year agreement between KDOT, Sedgwick County, Mays, and Goddard, the county has been contributing $325,000 per year, Mays has been contributing $3,000 per year, and Goddard has been contributing $2,500 per year. Wichita has declined to contribute. KDOT has been matching the local contributions at the rate of one-to-one for $330,500 per year. KDOT has offered to continue the partnership by matching up to $1 million in local funds at the rate of one-to-one for the five years beginning in 2021. This agreement has two primary differences from our current agreement. First, the annual local contribution can be variable and is set each year between zero and $1 million, depending on our ability to contribute. The proposed 2021-2025 CIP that was presented to you in the budget hearings proposes a $1 million contribution in 2021. Of course, that can be changed if you so desire. Second, KDOT has requested a two-party agreement with the county and asks that we establish separate reimbursement agreements with Mays and Goddard to defray our costs. We'll work out the agreements with Mays and Goddard after this agreement is approved. We recommend that you approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, before I get into discussing this, is this your last meeting with us or are we going to be with you next week?
My last day will be the 19th of June.
Very good.
That's a week from Friday.
A week from Friday. Well, hopefully, next week, while we can tell you how much we appreciate what you've done for the Sedgwick County thing, and I won't get into it this week, but please be here next week so that we can recognize, and I think it's 38 years that you've served Sedgwick County. It's been exemplary, and we sincerely appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you for those comments. I appreciate it.
The other thing is dealing with this issue. I've been working with David Spears now on this very issue ever since I was elected three and a half, almost four years ago. And if you want to see an economic development opportunity in western Sedgwick County, this is it. All you have to do is look at K96 on the east side of town and see that every major interchange is now a huge industrial or retail location. Everything in between it is houses, churches, and schools. The same thing is going to happen on the west side of town. We've been to Topeka several times to discuss this. We've talked with Jaluta Rens, who is a fantastic Secretary of Transportation about this many times, and she's been working with us diligently to get this project moved forward. As a matter of fact, I just briefed the board here a month ago, at a month-ago meeting of WAMPO. KDOT asked us to include this in part of the WAMPO planning for the future. So this is something that I think is critical to western Sedgwick County for the economic development. It's going to have a huge impact on Mays and Goddard, West Wichita. So I understand that this comes out of the one-cent sales tax money that we've got. So this is, the funding mechanism is available, and it is in the CIP right now. I think it's a great opportunity for us, and so I would like to make a motion that we approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
I have a couple of questions, Dave, before we take a vote. So we've been contributing $325,000 a year.
Yes, sir.
Out of this.
For the last five years.
For the last five years. And now, so you've got a CIP county-wide on all the projects. So we're going to add 625,000, we're going to over-double this. So what projects do not happen because we do this?
Well, the CIP we presented covers everything. I mean, we include the $1 million with it and our other projects. There's also the North Junction, which requires money in that. So one of the things that is going to be taking a backseat next year that we took out is the coal mix. It was the roads that had coal mix on it. So that's one of the pieces that will be missing next year, so you can cover this and the North Junction.
So if we approve a million dollars, so now Goddard and Mays are free to not, they only contribute in 3,000 and 2,500.
Right.
And so we would do the full million now, and now they're 3,000 and 2,500 goes away?
Commissioner, it's pretty much a token amount, but it shows they want to participate. But once again, the unique thing about this agreement is you don't have to do any. It can be zero or up to a million, depending on how this pandemic works out and what other things you have to do that might take priority over this. But I think it shows, the main thing I want to say is that KDOT, this is an important project to them. They're willing to triple what they have been giving in for this project. It's up to us if we want to triple also.
So if the $2 billion shortfall that the state is handling, if we write a check for a million and then three months later, in the fall, when the state gets together and says, oh, you know what, we need to borrow back money from KDOT, so we're in for a million, and all of a sudden, KDOT comes back to us and says, hey, sorry, we can only do 325,000.
That's why we have an agreement. Once again, you can amend the CIP. It shows a million proposed. You can amend that anytime and cut that back to whatever number you feel the commission feels is appropriate.
And is this a five-year commitment for a million dollars?
Yes.
A year for five years?
Yes. A million for us and a million for KDOT. But once again, it could be zero for five years if you want.
I hear that. What about next year, when we finally see what the numbers are revenue-wise? Can we be less than a million next year?
Yes. Yes.
So increasing 325,000 to a half million, would that be? It's a large leap. I'll just, and I'll just, my final comment is, I don't think it's fair for the public to hear that this project will be exactly like K96 because K96, all that land from the canal route, clear out to the Turnpike, was bought by private citizens and donated. The land was donated to the state to build a highway. So we are now, we are now buying land as a government. This land has not been donated. So the comparison from that to K96 is not accurate for the citizens to understand. And there was a promise that one of the donors of the land said that they would, halfway in between, that they would relocate a 3,000-person jobs, 3,000 jobs, which they did, right in the middle of that land. So I don't see, I don't see the correlation between this one and K96, but I just think that's fair to point out. So, but with that, Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. What I was comparing between this and K96 is the economic impact of it. And I agree that K96, the land was donated, but look at what the impact was on getting that land. What we've got on the west side of town is we've got a protective overlay that's been on there for years to protect that land so that it can be turned into the Northwest Bypass. But the problem is, nobody's donating it to us on the west side of town. We're having to buy it. And we've bought almost a third of it already. To this date, we own about a third of the property that's along there. And what this does is it enhances our ability to buy more of that right-of-way so that we can move forward. And we've got other things that we're working right now in the future. If we find that we can't afford to take this one-cent sales tax, a million of that money, then we don't do it. But the bottom line is that it is a valid comparison if we're talking about the economic impact of east and west. Thank you.
All right. I don't want to debate it, but there was a little road called Rock Road that was going right into that, that already had massive economic stuff that connected. I don't see a Rock Road connecting in this thing yet, but maybe it will someday.
You've never heard of Mays.
Mays Road.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, anyway. Commissioner Cruz, go ahead.
The east and west bide continues. You know, when I moved, when I moved to Sedgwick County in 2006, I lived on a little road called Zelta, right off of Kellogg. And from just the little amount of time that I've lived here, about 13, 14 years, there has been a massive growth. All, you know, had I lived right off of Greenwich way back when, I would have really loved to have just popped up the road north to all of the things that are going up north on Greenwich. And the future really speaks, I mean, I can see it, that what happens on North Greenwich could happen on North Mays. And that's the kind of sales tax revenue that we could see in the future from all of those businesses coming in, job creation. I mean, this is a lot of things in the future, and we have to start somewhere. The thing that I like about this agreement is that we don't have to put in a million dollars. We can put in whatever we see fit, but if the state is going to match it, how long will it take to acquire all of this land, say, if we do the million dollars for the next five years and into the future? Do we have a projection as to how long it will take to actually get this thing going?
That's a good question. If we participate at a million and KDOT participates at a million, it would be at least another 15 years, even at that rate, to get all the right-of-way. However, I would say this, I would concentrate on the right-of-way on the north end and build this thing in pieces because it's a $520 million project. So if we could work on the piece that goes through Mays Road that goes down to New Market Square and get that over to the new hospital that's out there also, that piece, and we're hearing from developers that that's very important to them, I think we want to work with KDOT and concentrate on the right-of-way for that piece. And so at least build something quicker than 15 years.
Yeah, I would agree. You know, I think when I look up here and I, when I think about these decisions that I make, and we talk about this a lot, we make decisions for quite a ways into the future. And I feel like this is really being at the forefront of this. I mean, I know it's been going on for a long time, so, but I think it's important for us to continue this, and that's why I'm supporting this. I think the people out west are excited about the possibility of expansion, of about more shopping opportunities. Maybe we could get a Stryker complex like we have. Isn't that what it's called, Stryker? You know, those kinds of things. I think it's important for us to start and continue the conversations now. So like I said, that's the reason why I'm supporting this motion.
Also, want to mention that we are doing a study with KDOT and the Turnpike to look at a possibility of a toll road and even for pieces of it. And if that, I don't know if that's going to happen, but if it does, then that will be another place to get funding to help pay for the road.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Some of the questions I had have already been answered by other commissioners, but that was one of my questions was, I understand that the purchasing of right-of-way can't be done with the, with bonds and can't be done with Turnpike fees. That's, I was, if we buy the right-of-way, it opens up the infrastructure part of this to be a Turnpike-type of toll road. I mean, that's something that could accelerate the project, but buying the right-of-way is the first step. And I don't think that can be done with state bonds or with toll, with Turnpike fees.
I can, I do not know the answer to that question. I know that Turnpike has attorneys and bond people and that there's very strict rules about what they can use the money for. I do not know the answer to that.
Well, you know, I think, to me, that's exciting to think that that would accelerate the project significantly, and I know that Secretary Lawrence has talked with, I'm sure every commissioner, that that seems to be her vision for the state, that we only have one toll road in the state, that's Kansas Turnpike, and many states out there have other pay roads, and they're all around us, just not in Kansas. And with new technology, this is becoming a lot easier. So this could really accelerate the infrastructure part of this project. And so I think she's fantastic. Her vision is great. She's very aggressive with what she does, and she's a very excellent Secretary of Transportation. But you mentioned a minute ago that we're not doing the coal mix. I want to be really clear, we still have coal-mixed roads to maintain. We're talking about the conversion of township roads to coal-mixed paved roads. We're not doing that anymore, and that's the money you're referring to. Is that correct?
We're taking out the maintenance of the coal-mixed roads. That's not in the CIP next year.
Right. But it used to be commissioners would pave a mile every other year. That's been defunded. Our 342 program is no longer, is no more. We still have to maintain our coal-mixed roads with something. And right now, this, are you saying this is the money that would otherwise be used for maintaining those roads?
Well, the question asked to me, what was taken out of the CIP to make room for this? And the answer is the maintenance of, not all the maintenance of, I'm talking about just certain parts of, like overlays or that sort of thing for the coal-mixed roads. We are still going to do in-house stuff like scrub seal and do 20 miles of that per year, but that's not an overlay. So I just want to make that clear. It's, that's what, it's maintenance of. It's, it's, that's what, it's maintenance of, but not the in-house maintenance, it's contracted maintenance.
Okay, now I am conflicted. I, I have, I have supported this intent for the last five years. I think it's been the right thing for Sedgwick County, even though it's not in my district. We don't seem to have any, any significant intent or, or, uh, to do anything significant on the south side of Sedgwick County. And I find that troubling, but I've been supportive as a commissioner that this is still good for Sedgwick County. I've been supportive of this, but I, I have a very great concern for our cold mixed roads because we have 150 miles. We need to have a comprehensive plan. And I don't know if we ought to be pulling money that would be potentially part of that solution in, in, in doing this. Although I think this doesn't necessarily compel us to say we have to spend the money. This is, again, is permissive. It doesn't say, say we have to do this. So I probably still support this, but I, I just want to say, I think we've got to understand we have infrastructure today that we absolutely must prioritize over any future roads that don't currently exist. So having said that, I'll support the, I'll support the motion, but we've got to understand that we, we have cold mixed roads that must be maintained and, and we have, we can't live without them. So thank you for the answers.
You're welcome. Okay. Any other comments? Being none, we have a motion in a second for the partnership agreement and the million dollars. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning again. Commissioners Tom Solz, county manager, recommend approval of consent items J, K, and L this morning.
I'll motion that consent items J, K, and L for approval.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Being no comment, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Commissioner, Mr. Papin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Did we want to move to the fire agenda or go to legislative issues? How did you want to do that today? I was expecting you to.
You expect us to go, you want us to go to the fire agenda?
As the governing body, the Fire District Number One, but we can do it however you want to do it.
All right, while we do that, we'll recess the Board of County Commission. Do we need to take a vote on that to go to the fire? So we'll recess and then we'll, we will start the Sedgwick County Fire District Number One meeting. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Madam Clerk?
Public agenda.
Anybody from the public wanting to speak and address the fire agenda? We didn't have anything written to us. I don't see anybody, so we will close the public agenda. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of April 1st, 2020.
Commissioners, you've seen the, uh, the minutes from the April 1st and I'd like to add A and B, the April 1st and April 8th minutes to one motion. If there's any corrections or additions or comments, being one, I'll make a motion to, to approve April 1st and April 8th. There's a motion in a second. No comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item C, amended and restated contract for fire protection.
Mr. Papin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. What we have today before you is a contract between the Fire District and Textron Aviation Inc. It's going to be an amended and restated contract. Similar contract was adopted in February of 2018, which at that time, and I'll explain a little bit of the differences, but this is a new contract, which has been the culmination of quite a bit of work over a fairly long period of time between the Associate General Counsel for Textron, Stephen Hall, who's been very helpful in doing this, Joe Norden with Gilmore &amp; Bell, who is the attorney for the county and on this matter. Mr. Norden drafted the agreement in 2018 and he also drafted this particular agreement. Also been working closely with Brent Shelton, our deputy CFO, on this agreement. What we have tried to do with this agreement is, is simplify the process in determining how much Textron should be paying for fire services each year. We believe this agreement removes the administrative burden of evaluating non-taxable assets for purposes of determining a rate for fire protection. The old agreement, which was a one-year agreement with one-year renewals for up to, I believe, 11 years, essentially had a fairly complicated formula of our appraiser having to go out and evaluate what, what was taxable, personal property and what were non-taxable, has to do with the IRBs that have been issued to Textron over the years. And I'm not an expert on this and Mr. Norden or Mr. Shelton can, can get into that in much more detail. But I'll tell you that we've, we've worked very closely over the last year to ensure that the three industrial districts that Textron has entered into an agreement with the city of Wichita for a non-annexation agreement. So they have a 20-year agreement with the city of Wichita to non-annex these particular properties that we're providing fire protection to, and that should give the Fire District more stability. This agreement, in contrast to the early agreement, which Textron could have pulled out of with proper notice in any given year, this agreement has an initial term of 10 years and then has a renewal term of five years. During the initial term, for the first five years, Textron will be paying Sedgwick County $600,000 a year for fire services. The second five years of the initial term, they pay $630,000 per year. And then for the renewal period is a $661,500 fee per year to the Fire District. We believe that, and I know Mr. Shelton had done an analysis of what Textron had paid over the years and determined that this is very much in the ballpark of what, what they're paying. And the advantage of this agreement is that they'll know each year and the county will know each year for budgeting purposes exactly how much money that Textron will be paying for fire services. So with that, I will say that I think this is a good agreement. It's been, like I said, a lot of work with the attorney from Textron and with Mr. Norden and working, and, and their work with the city of Wichita on the non-annexation agreement. And I, I wish that today that you would approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I, I know that it has been a lot of work and, and I appreciate Textron's cooperation to work with this. I, in lieu of knowing that this has been settled, I, I reached out and had a few conversations with some Textron executives and they are very pleased that this is what the, the future looks like and its stability to all parties, us and, and to the Textron. So that, that's my added comments. So thank you for all the work that you, you've done on this. Any other comments on this? Being none, I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the fire contract as presented. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Textron. So any other comments on the Fire District? And being none, we'll adjourn the Fire District and reconvene the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Legislative, Mike.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Joe. I didn't see you.
A week ago, while we were in the county commission meeting, the legislature was just going into their special session called by the governor. And I think towards the end of Thursday, they had reached a compromise bill, House Bill Number 2016, which was signed by the governor last Friday and was published in the Kansas Register yesterday. So this is now new law. There are, it's a 40-page bill, deals with a lot of different issues, some of which don't affect Sedgwick County directly. I mean, the legislature curtailed some of the governor's executive authority. They, they have some control over the coronavirus relief funds that are, the state will be spending. They've restricted the governor's ability to close schools without the Board of Education weighing in a number, and created some immunity for liability for nursing homes and other businesses and, uh, that are affected, that could be possibly sued because of actions they take in light of the coronavirus pandemic. And as Commissioner Howell alluded to earlier, there's, there's specific immunity for some of these businesses that they follow directives of the health officers, Board of Health, the governor and federal government, state government. But those have to be directives, not just recommendations is what we've made. But if they follow these directives, then, then there's some immunity built in for businesses, businesses in this bill. But as I say, these don't effectively direct the county, but what, what does affect the county with the new legislation is Dr. Menz no longer has the authority to just issue an order, stay-at-home order or gathering order without Board of County Commissioners sitting at the Board of Health having the opportunity to rescind those orders or modify those orders. The governor, after I believe September 15th, has the authority to once again issue executive orders relating to coronavirus. I believe these orders are only good for 15 days unless ratified by the state finance council with a six-member vote. So there's some, some oversight there. But even if the governor issues an executive order, the Board of County Commissioners has the authority to make an order less restrictive than the governor. So that's additional powers that the Board of County Commissioners has in this case. No longer will the governor's executive orders be a criminal action, class A misdemeanor, but will in turn, there will be a $2,500 civil, up to $2,500 civil penalty for violation of our orders. And the district attorney in Sedgwick County would have some injunction powers to, to use to enforce our orders as well. The action of, uh, by action of House Bill 2016, we're going to have to look at a couple of charter resolutions, Charter 54, Charter 58, which actually gives Dr. Menz some authority, additional authority, and we exempted out of some of the KSA 65-201, KSA 65-202, which has a number of provisions dealing with the health, health officer, we thought were more restrictive or we didn't want in Sedgwick County. We're going to have to go back and look at those now because the legislature specifically put in a provision that said we can't charter out of those, makes those statutes uniform, we can't charter out of them. So we're going to be looking very closely at that. So that's the only legislative action that we have this week is, is the special session and the passage of that bill. We're still reviewing it. Justin Wagner in our office did a very good job of looking through this bill, is working on a summary, and we'll provide each one of you a summary of what this legislation does as well. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Well, thanks for the briefing. That's really good. Does anybody have any thoughts, comments, questions? I don't believe so. So thanks again for the presentation. You're welcome. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Do any of the commissioners have anything under other that they would like to comment on? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we, as we've discussed throughout today's meeting, I've had some time to contemplate. I would, I would like it if we would at least, since we're in a public open meeting, to provide some direction to staff regarding this potential policy for townships. We could, I think there's three options here. We could call an ad hoc meeting that would simply say, we're going to host a meeting and call townships to attend. Those would be presented and discussed. Alternatively, we probably could wait until August or February when there's a, a national meeting that would happen. Some of those meetings are not that well-attended. I think some people are not able to attend those meetings and so I'm, I'm concerned about that. Besides that, the one in August is not really our meeting. It's, it's, it's more of a social event that they host. And so I'm concerned about waiting until February. And then finally, we could just do direct mail to, to absolutely communicate with, with these officials. And I think, that's what I would like to do. So I would like it if we would determine a timeline to give commissioners a certain amount of time to provide input to draft changes or amendments to the policy, which point, some point we would say we're close and we'd like to send that with some information to townships, give them a certain amount of time for them to respond so we can receive those comments and possibly make further amendments. And then at some point, this would come back to the, to the commission for potential adoption. To me, this time, this timeline would be a way for us to, to not necess, unnecessarily delay the, delay the implementation of this policy. And I think it's more respectful to the townships to make sure that they all have the same information and they've all received it and then no one was missed. And so I think that the, I would like the commissioners to, I guess, have a discussion potentially about a path forward in terms of determining a timeline, giving commissioners a chance to make amendments, and then communicate through townships through a mail process rather than waiting for a future meeting that they would have, not necessarily about this topic. So with that, I'd like to ask the commissioners for input.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My position is where it was last week and I believe that we need to bring this up at the summer social event. We can have this policy printed up, give it to all of the trustees and even the clerks and treasurers as well. The individuals that don't come, we can mail it out to them, let them know, and we can kind of gauge their support at that meeting. I, I think that, that's where it was last week and I still think that's fair and the best way to get in touch with everyone.
Commissioner Howell, I, I know that I had mentioned that, that I would, had a number of changes that I would recommend or recommendations in the policy. I've not got with Justin on those. I can tell you, I'm, I'm very concerned. I mean, I, it'll be a very emphasis from my perspective that if the county expends any money, that we are pretty much, we're guaranteed to get paid back. Even though, if, if township is broke, then the township will click in and do a mill levy on everybody in that township to assure, not over, not over 10 years.
I understand.
In, in a 90-day or whatever, whatever the invoice is. But this, I don't, I understand that the county has done this in the past a few times and never got paid back. And so not necessarily that township, but some places, a couple of times, they've done some things and then now, okay, it's, it's okay. And so not, not paid back. If we're going to do something like this, it, it will have some serious teeth in it to assure that the citizens are aware that if the township doesn't pay it back, that the citizens and the property owners in that township will be assessed right then for that one year to get up, to get the money back.
May I, may I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So again, we didn't really get a chance to talk about your concern and I, I appreciate your concern and I have the same concern, but I'm not aware of any, any township that has received, if you will, road repairs on, you know, from the county that we expected to be repaid, repaid by the township that they were, that they did not provide that payment back. I'm not aware of that, but I, I would love to have the information if that is, if that is in fact true. I did say there's two things that, that are in this that I think should be noted, and that is, there is case law. If we follow a resolution process, which is what Council Mike Papin has indicated, if we follow a resolution process where we have a framework, Texas size 68-124, it sets us up legally that if we have to access a court proceeding to, to get a judgment against that township to get paid back, we could, we could reasonably win that since there's case law that says that that has already happened in the state of Kansas. But the framework, this policy is, is a, is a protection to make sure that we're set up for success. But second of all, I've asked them to look at the debt set-off laws of our state, which apparently, if I've read them, it seems to be that they do apply to a township. And bear in mind, since we have access to their funds before they do, unless they levy zero taxes, I don't know how they would operate with zero taxes, but we would actually collect those property tax funds on their behalf and then we would have the chance to intercept the funds that are, that are basically debt in, oh, to Sedgwick County. So we have two opportunities, I think, to, to get, get paid back. But I do trust them. I think that they're not intending to, to take advantage of other taxpayers. I think that they just need to solve the problem. Sometimes they don't know what to do or how to do it and sometimes they have insurmountable problems.
problems. And this policy gives us a framework and a tool to actually create solutions that protect our residents. And so I understand you have some concerns, Mr. Chairman, and I think there are answers to those concerns. Just as I've quoted just now, I believe that these things are in there. And by the way, if we would pass a resolution to actually provide some repair to the township, I think that the terms of costs and payment, you know, our relationship with them financially would be outlined in that resolution that we would contemplate at that time. I'm not sure that necessarily needs to be in this framework resolution, as long as it's handled either here or in that future resolution. But either case, we would have to outline our expectations to the township that when we spend this money, they absolutely have no way that they could not pay that back to the county. But I do appreciate your concerns. I have the same concerns. I think there are reasonable answers to those concerns.
And I've got a few other things, but the one, the two main, one is payment, and the other one is total transparency. I believe that every citizen in that township needs to be somehow advised that this is pending, and that if their township leadership does not pay that back, that they will be assessed. So not just eight citizens on one road, but everybody in the township. So full transparency will be hugely important, so they don't get surprised.
Well, just to be clear-
And I'm not interested in going to court either.
Can you interrupt? I apologize. Just to be clear, we would not be levying the tax to the township. That's not what I'm suggesting. The suggestion is that the township would have to pass a budget. They have a just debt they must pay. And if they choose not to pay a just debt, that's where this ends up in court. And so it'd be a civil case, township against, or I should say, Sedgwick County against the township. But they have, there are plenty of laws in place to compel them to levy taxes to pay just debts. And so I agree. I'm not sure we'd have to do something like levy a tax on behalf of the township. That's already taken care of in other laws.
We don't need to levy tax. The township should levy the tax.
I agree completely.
Not, I don't want to levy the tax. I just want to get paid back, and I want the citizens to know that their township and their township leadership is not able to manage their own roads. And I think that's fully transparent to them.
All right.
We can discuss some of the other things on the side. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had very little time the other day at staff meeting. It was the first time we had a chance to look at this. There are a lot of issues that we can't rush into this, especially when it's another government agency. It'd be like me going to Wichita saying, hey, I don't like the potholes on Maze Road. If you don't fix them, I'm going to go fix them. If we start passing something along this line, we need to assure that all of the folks in the township, as Commissioner Meister mentioned, understand that we might fix one road, but everybody in that entire township is going to pay for it. I don't like rushing into something without making sure that we've looked at all of the different issues. I agree that there's something right now in Kansas statute, and if we're going to use that, that we need something, some kind of a resolution passed in order to be able to implement that. We don't want to just take that statute and say, hey, tomorrow we're going to go out and fix this road and build Rockford Township. So I also don't like the idea of just sending something out by mail and then trying to react to that. I believe that August is a great time for us to be able to discuss this. If we are going to send something out by mail, send it out to every one of the township officers before the August meeting, so that they all can review exactly what we've got at that point in time and make recommendations to us before we move forward. Unless there is dialogue back and forth, and sending a letter out does not provide us dialogue and feedback, I wouldn't be in favor of that. But if we can get all the townships to sit down and talk with us about it, to review exactly what we have, to make sure that the citizens in those townships understand that all of the citizens in the township are going to pay for any actions that we take, I don't have a problem with moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howell?
I think, thank you for a chance to respond to that. Again, this is not spending money. If we decide to exercise the option in the future to actually fix a road, that has to be another resolution. We would have to deliberate, and a majority of this board would have to approve that future resolution. This is just a framework on how 68-124 would be utilized in Sedgwick County. This is not us spending actual money to actually fix a road. This is simply setting up, how would Sedgwick County exercise 68-124 if we ever had a need to do so? It sets up a framework. And do I think that, I think most townships, virtually every township, does a tremendous job, but this would never even be discussed. But this is probably a very rarely-used tool, that when you have a conflict where someone can't reasonably get home, and school buses can't get children, and on it goes, and public safety folks can't get to these homes reliably, then something needs to happen, and the county at some point must step in and provide, if you will, make sure that people can be safe. And I don't think this is something we'll be using very often, but if we ever wanted to use it, this sets us up for success, so we can be repaid. It doesn't require a separate mill levy. It doesn't require notifying the township people, every single one of them, because it's done through their township budget. It's a normal budget process. Do I think that townships are going to love the idea that we're setting up some framework? Some of them actually might, because at least then it's clear to them how we would exercise 68-124. Right now, it's not clear. I think Mr. Papoun has been very forthright in saying, we don't really have any framework as to how we would use the statute. So this is probably a good thing. Doesn't mean we're going to exercise it, just means that if we ever wanted to exercise it, here's how you would do it. So I don't understand the reluctance to go forward, but I don't mind discussion with the townships. I just, and my concern is, I don't want to spend a half a year pushing this back. I think it deserves to have our attention. Whatever changes you want to make, please give it your attention, make your recommendations for change, and let's lean forward. And if we can get this done sooner than later, it helps people today be safe in Sedgwick County, and they deserve this attention. I don't know why we would need to push this arbitrarily, push it back for months, and that's my concern. I think every commissioner has every right to review this and make recommended changes, but it does deserve our attention. And I don't know that we should wait for months. And so if Commissioner O'Donnell is adamant that he wants to have face-to-face meeting, I think we should call an ad hoc meeting. Because again, this would at least be our meeting. We have a reason we would call the meeting, we would have business to conduct, and that way they would know why we're getting together, and it could happen sooner than later. I don't know that we should be waiting until the Lake Afton social event that may or may not even happen. And again, that is not our meeting. That's just simply a social event for us to conduct county business, and it's not that well-attended. If you actually want to have a meeting face-to-face with township officials, let's make that meeting happen. Let's call an ad hoc meeting and organize that, and then actually have on-purpose discussion for real business. That's fine. But either way, I think we need to move forward, one way or the other.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you. And at this point, I think I'd like to gauge some support there. I mean, really, the problem, Commissioner Howell, it seems like it's one township out of everybody, and I'm just concerned about doing a policy, a sweeping policy, to affect every corner of the county, because one township has been mismanaged. We all agree with that. But they're getting a new trustee this November. You said, guaranteed, there's going to be a new trustee. So why are you, why can't we wait until that when there's been badly leadership? There are sometimes bad elections, wrong person gets in, they can address it. But I'm just concerned about these sweeping changes affecting every township in the county when my townships have been managed very well, in my opinion.
So may I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So the answer to that question is, and I, first of all, I'd like to say, I'm not going to, I'm not going to give an opinion on the management of this township. That's not my business today. We have some concerns. I've been working on this township for years. Okay? But that's, I think, I don't need to issue an opinion, I don't need to issue an opinion on whether these people are good or bad. That's really not my point today.
All it should be opinion. I've seen the pictures, and it's affecting all of us.
What I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to focus on today is the fact is, whether we have a problem anywhere in any township, ever, we deserve to have a policy that defines a framework on how to use 68-124. I think it's wonderful that there's townships out there that we never even have a reason to discuss exercising 68-124 against a township. That's wonderful. But it doesn't mean that this will forever be great for every township for the distant future. If any township has a problem, it becomes a solution we can contemplate. It doesn't mean there's problems out there, and they shouldn't feel like this is a strong-arm county taking control of the township. That's not what this is. This is desperate citizens that have no other options, and they're coming to the county commissioners at some point where they have no other options. They've done everything they can to solve the problem. That is a pretty rare situation. And if that ever happens, would we not want to have framework on how we would exercise 68-124? I think we would. So just, you know, even though they have a new trustee, again, we have to have a new trustee no later than January, and maybe these problems will be solved. But whether that's true or not doesn't change the fact that we ought to have framework on how to exercise the statute.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. May I make a suggestion that we set a date to discuss this or to have these changes made? Chairman, I believe you have some, I have a few. Get that in writing, get a new policy drafted to all of us, send that out to the townships, have a date for when they can make responses back. I mean, let's put a plan in place, so I understand there is a need. I understand that, you know, we need to get this resolved, so we're not lingering and have a resolution happen with this topic. Would that be agreeable with other commissioners, that we could set a time, that we could have the changes, the policy then corrected, it sent to all townships? Is that a, please help me understand how we can move this ball forward.
Well, there's three things that have to happen based on the discussion. We have to clean the policy, we have to engage a township, and we have to ratify the policy. Those are three steps. So-
So can you set those dates? Can we set those dates? So a week policy is, can we set this?
Yes. We can clean the policy with 2-2-1 meetings.
Okay.
We can't ratify it, though, until we present to the township. And how we present to the township, we'll have to discuss with you in the 2-2-1s, but there's a summer social, or we can ad hoc meeting, or it's a combination of the two, because I'm understanding this texted Mr. Spears, and the summer social is iffy if it's going to happen because of the pandemic. So we may have to ad hoc a meeting.
So could, pardon my interruption, could we set up a Zoom call? I mean, like we did with the Black Alliance?
Sure.
I think-
Or we can use the Extension Center and spread everybody out. There's options there to run a meeting and download this information to them. I'm hearing you with a four-step, that after we clean the policy, we want to send the policy to the township so they can decipher it before we have the meeting. So we'll add that step in as well.
Yes.
We can timeline this out.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think that would provide us a resolution and hopefully get this kind of off of our plate. I understand this is important, and so let's address it and be done and move on.
Okay.
I agree. Thank you.
I think it'd be a professional courtesy if the commissioner that is passionate about this proposed a timeline instead of asking us to. So why don't you write one up, give it to the, and let's get this over with. You write it up on your estimated timeline, give it to Tom, so he can share it. Because I don't think Commissioner Cruz should be championing a timeline and the dates involved, and I don't want, I've got other stuff going on as well. But I will take time to avoid the other stuff we've got going on and get into this deeply, and then we will get your timeline submitted to him, so we can all digest that.
My reason for bringing this up is I just wanted to have a discussion in a public open meeting about the idea of having a timeline and our steps forward and how we would go forward, whether it be mail or whatever we would do. It sounds like Commissioner Cruz basically echoed my comments. I completely agree. That's what I wanted to hear from my colleagues, is that a timeline to keep us moving forward is what I was hoping I would hear. So with that, I will make that proposal to manager's tolls. Thank you.
We've had plenty of discussion. We had 30 minutes of discussion this morning, and followed by 30 minutes this afternoon on this one item. So thank you. And any other comments on anything? Okay.
Oh, sorry. I know, I know you want to close it out.
Commissioner Cruz, that's right.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say really quickly, I'm so proud of the Project Justice kids who got the protest going this weekend. I'm just very, very proud of those youth in our community who are stepping up to the plate to voice their opinions. It's important that we use our voice, no matter how big or small you may feel. I think it's very important, and so I'm very proud of those people in this community who are stepping up to the plate to speak out against things that they believe are unjust. So thank you for that opportunity, Chairman.
You bet. Any other comments? Okay. Being none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.